Hello and welcome to the February 6, 2024 Village Buchanan Board Meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the people of our country, to one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first, we are going to approve the minutes for December 5th, the special meeting and the regular village board meeting. Do I have any additions, corrections?
I'm good.
Okay, we're all good?
All good.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the December 5th meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the floor, agenda items only? Is there anyone that would like to make comments? Okay. Okay, under new business, there's a presentation by AMS, but what I have to tell you is there was a problem with sending out the notices. It was noticed in the newspapers, but the notices within a certain area were not sent out by mail, certified return receipt. So we will not be opening the public hearing this evening, but we will allow for comments because it was advertised. Okay? So AMS, would you like to do your presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. My name is Mark Weingarten. I'm a partner in the law firm of Del Bello, D'Nellin, Weingarten, Wise, and Whittaker, and it's my pleasure to be here again this evening representing AMS Acquisitions LLC in connection with its request for site, development plan, special permit, and steep slopes permit approval to permit the construction of 148 multifamily homes on the approximate six-acre site located at the intersection of Albany Post Road and Craft Lane in Buchanan. I'm joined tonight, and you'll hear shortly, from Ryan Sutterwin from AMS, from Stuart Lacks, our architect from Perkins Eastman, and Kevin Masio Echio from JMC, our engineer. Also with us tonight is Peter Faro at AKRF, if there are any planning questions. We'll give you a brief history. Again, if it's repetitive for the people that I'm looking at right now, I apologize, but because, of course, this is in preparation for what will be a public hearing, this is for the public, so we will give the background again. Last January, as you recall, AMS filed a petition seeking to amend the zoning map of the village to rezone the rear portion of the site from M1 Light Industrial District, which was 3.82 acres, to the C2 district and to map the entire site to the C1, C2 overlay zoning district. We also requested certain amendments to the C1, C2 overlay zoning district. Your board approved those requests in September of 2023, and therefore, the project that is before you this evening fully complies with the zoning that is in place. The proposed site consists of 148 luxury multifamily homes, 63 one-bedrooms, 85 two-bedrooms, with upscale amenities in a five-story building. The project contains a beautiful open courtyard, an outdoor pool, fitness center, and resident lounge. It also provides green features such as bicycle racks, energy-efficient appliances and lighting, water-efficient plumbing fixtures, and 12 electric vehicle charging stations. There are 223 parking spaces provided. 149 of those spaces are provided in structures underneath the building, and of course, we will show this to all of you again pictorially in a moment. Our proposal will develop a longtime vacant site in this village and will beautify the neighborhood, in our opinion. We will also build sidewalks as a pioneer of your plan to create a village-like community on that portion of Albany Post Road. The project is consistent with your comprehensive plan and your zoning code, as I mentioned, including the supplemental district regulations for the overlay district, as well as the general special permit requirements of your code. It creates a more diverse housing stock. It provides a transitional use between the R 7.5 and R 10, located to the west of the site, and the M1 district to the east. It creates physical and aesthetic improvements to the streetscape on the Albany Post roadside with the new sidewalk, pedestrian crossing, and landscaping, and it is designed to preserve the natural features of the site wherever possible. We believe the project contains numerous benefits for the village and its residents. It will generate significant net property tax benefits for both the village and the school district, taking a vacant site and now we estimate approximately turning out $830,000 per year in total property taxes, with approximately $250,000 a year to the village and $470,000 to the schools. It creates numerous construction jobs and activities. The local businesses will love the increase in sales from the construction workers. They will also benefit in the long term from the new customers who will come to live in the village. It creates a more diverse housing stock, a place for empty nesters to relocate from their single-family homes, divorcees to stay nearby the family home, and even more importantly, bringing people with income to live in your village. And when they are ready to start a family, they will be the first in line to buy single-family homes here. It's happening in your neighboring community, and we believe it is ready to happen in Buchanan. In addition to the site plan and special permit approvals, we are also seeking a steep slopes disturbance permit. By locating the building in the center of the site, we have avoided disturbance to the maximum extent practicable as to steep slopes, but we do have to disturb some. Finally, as you are aware, this board on September 5, 2023 concluded seeker in its role as lead agency when it adopted a negative declaration of environmental significance. Since our submission of this application on October 17, it was determined that a wetland permit is not required for this project in accordance with Section 203-10 of the Wetlands Law of the Village. Despite that exemption, we have submitted a wetland mitigation plan as part of our site plan to mitigate the impacts of the small incursions into the buffer area, not the wetlands, but the buffer area, totaling approximately 10,670 square feet, and it's just for the purposes of creating the sidewalk, which you have requested, the fire access lane, which is necessary on the southern side of the building, and the construction of a stormwater treatment area. So that's all that we are, the only reason we're going into the buffer. Our request was referred to this board by the planning, was referred by this board to the planning board for a report and recommendation as required by the new zoning ordinance provision. We appeared at the planning board on November 13. In response to the comments received at that evening, we submitted a letter dated December 6 attaching revised plans, a construction management plan, and a draft construction logistics map. Our 12-6 letter also contained specific responses to questions that were raised at the November 13 meeting. We appeared a second time at the planning board on December 20, and I'm pleased to report that the planning board positively recommended our application, together with a number of comments and suggested revisions. Subsequent to the planning board's positive recommendation, our engineers submitted further revised plans in response to the comments of the village engineer in his letter dated 12-6. On 12-27, our engineers sent a revised submission to the New York State DOT, which addresses comments in the DOT review letter of 12-7, and also comments received during a virtual meeting with the DOT on December 12. On January 15, 2024, the village engineer sent us additional comments, and finally, on January 29, 2024, JMC, our engineer, submitted a letter to your board responding to the outstanding comments, including the submission of the requested revisions to the preliminary construction management plan, the store-worth of pollution prevention plan, and a report on subsurface soil and foundation investigations. So that's a lot, and I apologize, it's been a long process. The long and the short of it, the site's been rezoned, it's, we are permitted to build the building in accordance with your zoning ordinance, subject to site plan and special permit approval, which is before you. The planning board has positively recommended the project as we have, as it is before you with their comments that came before you. All of the questions that have been asked by your professionals, we believe we have submitted our responses to, and we've answered to the best of our abilities. So we're at a point now where we hope we'll be able to move to the public hearing, if not tonight, at your next meeting, to be able to get through this process. So at this point, I'm going to sit down, I'm going to turn it over to our architect, who's going, Stuart Lacks, who's going to walk you through the design. After that, we'll show you a brief presentation from our engineer, who's going to talk through the civil and the engineering issues that have been raised in those letters. Ryan, are you going to do the design piece tonight, or we're not? We did a design piece for you, you'll recall, the last time, because there were specific questions about that. Clearly, Ryan is here, you asked us to show you some other projects from other places. We could do it again if you'd like, but we've already showed you that, that was the answer to the question. But for our presentation, I'll have the architect, the engineer, and if you have anything more that you'd like us to do, we'd be happy to do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus, does the camera work, the TV work on the other side that they're?
Yes, we can see it on the other side.
All right, it's just this side?
That's why I put the TV here. It'd be confusing for you, but you can't see it.
Oh, I can't see it.
No, does that work?
Yeah, that one.
Look at that.
I'll look at that.
Which, just to make sure, I'll show you, I picked your right one, so I can share. That one. Just share.
There we go. And a mayor, other trustees, members of the advisors to the board and the public. Stuart Lacks at Perkins Eastman, architect for the project. Start, Marcus, you can go ahead. So I'll lead right away. This is a rendering of the northwest corner of the building. This is where the main drop-off is, here, entry to the garage, just past it. Next slide, please. And this is the view of the south of the building. From the pond, you can see the parking level at the bottom, and then the courtyard that Mark Weingarten referred to in his introduction. Keep going. This is the lower-level plan, the garage plan. We've got our main entry lobby here, elevator and stair access up, again, the parking garage entrance here, and then 149 parking spaces, and then plus some additional tandem spaces that are not counted towards zoning, but utilizing that space. We've also got some utility rooms, trash removal. There's some stairs, fire stairs for the building that exit as well. Great, thank you. Again, this is the first residential level, this is the level with the courtyard. There's amenity spaces here, that's again the northwest corner of the building, and that'll open up into the courtyard, as well as the apartments facing the courtyard have balconies. Next slide. These are the two most typical units, so one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. To reiterate, there are 85 two-bedroom units in the building, 63 one-bedrooms. All of the apartments are what's commonly referred to as ADA accessible, complies with all necessary handicap requirements, as well, all have washer and dryers, fully equipped kitchens, et cetera, bathrooms. The two bedrooms all have two bathrooms. And next slide. This is the typical floor plan, second, third, and fourth, repeat themselves and stack up the building, full-floor plans, elevators in opposite corners here, off the amenity and lobby, and then another elevator here to sort of evenly distribute around the building for the residents. Next slide. And we'll work through the elevations, starting, let me just get my bearings here. Yep. Here again, this is the north elevation, this is the main entry point, again, the entry into the garage, main entry into the lobby, and the residential levels above. This is the east side of the building, this faces the power lines. You can see we've got some ventilation openings for the garage, and you get a sense of the grade changes along there. Next slide. These are the other two major facades. This is the west side, so this would be behind the hardware store. And again, garage openings, we've got some stair exits, the lobby itself, and the four stories. And then, whoop, we can do, this is the south view, again, with the courtyard in the middle and the two wings. And I'll just point out, and there's some slides later that go into it, a couple down, in terms of the materials used within, we've tried to pick materials that fit in within the vernacular of Buchanan. So these are the courtyard views, the different sides within the courtyard, that'll be seen mostly by the residents. And here's where we talk about the different materials, a combination of what's referred to commonly as hardy plank, a semititious siding, both in lap and clabbered, and then a similar vinyl for the side facing the power lines, some trim, and we have, if you're interested, we've got boards from previous presentations with the actual samples. Next slide. Some of the rest of the slides, this is an aluminum that looks, siding that looks like wood, that's for the underside of the entry canopy, some metal panels, some simulated stone, asphalt shingle, et cetera. Next slide. And just continuing on the materials, some of the asphalt shingle on the roof, the windows, the aluminum that would be used as the railings at the balconies. Next slide. Just to cover some questions, these I think are in response to some degree to the planning board questions. We have a two-hour, a three-hour fire separation concrete slab that separates the parking level with the residential above. Each of the floor systems and the roof, wood construction, but one hour fire rated. The building is fully sprinkled, both the garage and the residential levels, and one hour construction between apartments, half an hour at the corridor, and the stair and elevator shafts are all protected by two-hour construction. Next slide. Jump through a little bit.
That was it.
That was it, okay, yep. Just finishing with a rendering available if you have any other questions or comments that come up later. And if not, I will hand it off to Kevin.
Is that yours?
Yep. Good evening, Kevin Masio Echio from JMC for Civil Engineering. Just want to, most of this presentation, we kind of had presented at the last meeting, and we did put in some updates based on some responses to comments and incorporated that into the presentation. So just to kind of go through some of these things quickly, it is a review, we want to make sure that this is available for the public record. So just walking through with the site location, north is to the left on the screen here, and the site is located along Albany Post Road, which is New York State Route 9A and Craft Lane. So just zooming in a little closer, again, Albany Post Road is towards the bottom of the screen, and Craft Lane is on the left side. And the site does surround the hardware store, which is existing, and then Dunkin' Donuts is just to the south, towards the right of the screen, just for a location. And now, this, the next few slides are walking through the existing site constraints, which we did try and work around as placing the site and developing the building and parking lot locations. So towards the southern end of the site, highlighted in blue, is the wetland buffer area, which goes around the existing pond. Next slide. And then in orange shown is the steep slopes, which are in both the northeast and southeast corners of the site. And on the next slide. So this is where, what we had done in developing the site plan was we tried to mitigate and place the building and the proposed site features outside of the existing feature, the existing items that were already on the site. So we placed the building between the sloped areas as much as possible and outside of the pond and the wetland buffer. And the parking lot area is located towards the northwest corner, again, trying to stay out of the existing sloped areas as much as we can. And also shown up on the slide too, just to show everything that we are, or discuss everything that is being shown on the side. In purple, there's a potential future retail building in the northwest corner, as discussed with the village. At this time, this is not proposed, and then in order to accommodate this, additional parking required per zoning would go into the steep slope area, which is a reason why we're not proposing it at this time. However, in the future, if the parking that's utilized by the residents doesn't necessitate the full use of the parking, there might be potential to get a variance or look through using some of the parking that is already going to be proposed as for the retail in the future. So that's not proposed with this current application, but just we're leaving the site available for future retail use. So on this side, we're just kind of highlighting in the different colored areas, these are the existing steep slopes and how we are, and where the limit of the servants line is, shown in red. So there's two different steep slope categories, shown in yellow and the orange, and the site has them in both the northeast and southeast corners. So this is just detailing the steep slope disturbance that's proposed. This slide indicates the trees that are to be removed on the property, and there's 371 trees proposed to be removed as part of the development. So on this slide, we're indicating and getting into what the proposed site plan is and where access is provided from. So the main vehicle access is proposed off of Craft Lane with a two-way driveway for all vehicles to enter and exit from. And there's a secondary access for emergency vehicle access proposed off of Albany Post Road, which would have a mountable curb and a chain across it, just to prevent other vehicles from using it. I think I skipped one there. Oh, okay, maybe I'm just out of order. So this, now we have zoomed in towards the vehicle drop-off area. So we're providing here is the main access through the site is vehicles coming off of Craft Lane and then going towards the parking garage for residents that will be living on the property. So the parking garage access is towards the top of the screen, and you would access through through the property and go directly into the parking garage, or there's a drop-off lane for pickup and drop-off of residents. And then they would circle around as a one-way flow and then be able to exit out of the So now, what we are providing as part of the site plan is three ways of pedestrian access to the property, to the building. There's two of these accesses due to site conditions, they would have staircases along them, both the northern and southern access points for pedestrians, so those would not be accessible, but the center access would be an accessible route for all ADA. And this is just showing that we are providing multiple ways of getting on and off the site for pedestrian activity. All right. So this slide is summarizing the amount of parking that's proposed, and this meets the village code, which is 1.5 spaces per unit. So we're providing inside the building and then outside of the building, a combined total that meets the village code. Inside the building is pretty much a rate of one space per unit, and then outside, we're picking up the remaining. So with the proposed site plan, there's 12 electric vehicle charging spaces proposed, and they're depicted in orange on the plan. And then additionally, all of the surface parking spaces are proposed to be ready for future electric vehicle charging, so they would have empty conduits run, so it can be installed later without having to tear up or do a lot of work throughout the parking area. And in addition to all of the parking outside, there's a potential future EV spaces which should be located towards the perimeter of the garage. At this time, the only spaces that are proposed to be installed right now is the 12 noted in orange. So shown in red on this slide is the fire access roads. These are required by code and have been coordinated with the fire department throughout the process. So the main access is shown off of Craft Lane, and there's a secondary access, as discussed before, off of Albany Post Road. So what's going on, and these are 26-foot wide roadways, which do circulate around towards the rear of the building on the south side and the north side as well. And this provides setup areas for the fire trucks to fight any potential fires that would occur. And around the property, there's an existing fire hydrant, kind of in the corner, it's shown with the dash circle of Craft Lane and Albany Post Road, and then we're looking to provide two fire hydrants onsite on the north side and the south side, where there will be setup areas for the fire trucks, as well as it was requested during, by the planning board, to have a hose connection on the east side of the building towards Con Ed's property, just in case they've mentioned that there sometimes is issues towards Con Ed's property. So what we're highlighting here in green is where there's proposed rock cut areas throughout the property, and then what we're providing is rock cuts to mitigate the steep slope disturbance, and so we're proposing to provide rock cuts instead of grading all the way out. And then with the rock cuts, the proposed, the proposed treatment that's desired is to have just a rock face, but as we, as we go through, and the geotechnical engineer has prepared reports and their findings, and if this is not possible, with the results of the final condition of the rock, the applicant would be looking to place a retaining wall in front of the rock slope that would be exposed to mitigate any of the condition left behind. So I know previously, we had shown a wire mesh in front of the retaining, in front of the rock, and based on village comments, the applicant is not desiring to install that at this point. So also prepared in response to some of the comments from the engineer and the village board was, we were preparing this cross-section, which did look all the way through with Albany Post Road on the right, and then as you go across the site, we have our parking lot, and then additional parking, and then there's the main access drive, and then that's where the most visible, the rock slope would be proposed onsite, which parallels Albany Post Road adjacent to the north-southway, adjacent to the main access road. So what we're showing here is just kind of a scale for reference, showing some of the tree heights that once they mature, the cars, as they will be parked. So this rock slope is set back quite away from the roadway, it's about 150 feet back from the roadway, so it's not right up next to you as you're driving along the roadway. And then also, this rock slope that in this area and throughout is about 15-foot maximum. Some of the other areas do get up a little bit higher, but just for kind of a scale of reference, it's not right in your face as you're driving along Albany Post Road, there's going to be landscaping and some cars between, so it's, it's just we're mitigating slightly the visual impacts just by where it's located onsite. And then also, as just mentioned, based on village comments, this time, we're not looking to propose the wire mesh on top of it as mitigation. So moving through other aspects of the site plan, this shows stormwater and where it goes now, it goes to two different locations onsite. The orange area goes south to the pond, and the green area goes northwest off the property towards Estates Right Away and Craft Lane. And what we have designed on the next slide? Next slide, please. There it is. All right. So what we've designed for treating stormwater in the proposed condition is to mitigate, or to use the similar directions for the stormwater that's on the property. So again, orange is the proposed building, which is, which is being directed towards the pond, and then green is directed towards Estates Right Away, and there's different practices which are being proposed throughout the site. We have the orange area, we're treating with a green roof on the surface, within the courtyard area. There's a stormwater planer area as well, and then there's subsurface detention system, which will mitigate the proposed stormwater. And then similarly, going the other way, instead of using some, there's a manufactured structure as a water quality structure, instead of using the stormwater planters and a detention system. And then additionally, in this area towards Craft Lane, we're looking to replace some of the stormwater pipes that have collapsed in this area, which are causing some existing issues, particularly the pipe which does cross under Craft Lane. So the next, the next few slides, we're just walking through some of the stormwater practices that are being proposed onsite. So on the left is the stormwater planer at grade, so this would be just towards the south end of the building, and on the right is some of the plantings which are proposed within the courtyard area, and these areas would collect the stormwater and treat it before releasing it off the site. And then this is the water quality structure, which is proposed in the parking lot area on the north side, and it just kind of, it's filters, and the water goes through it and is able to be filtered out some of the pollutants. So there's two different detention systems proposed onsite. The one towards the south side of the building is pipes, and what we've coordinated with the manufacturer, because this stormwater system is proposed below the fire access road, so it wanted to be able to hold the heavy loads of any potential fire trucks or other emergency vehicles. And the other system on the right, it is a strong system which can hold vehicle loading, but the manufacturer does, would certify the closed pipe design, so that's why we put that one underneath the emergency access road, and the other one is not in an area where the fire trucks would go, but there would be below the parking lot area in the north side. So there's two different systems, where they're both doing the same thing of just holding water and then releasing it out slowly off the site. So there's two different systems where they're both doing the same thing of just holding water and then releasing it out slowly off the site. So moving through a few of the other utilities, both the water and sanitary are village, are within the village services. The connection for the water is proposed off Craft Lane, coming up to the site and serving both the fire hydrants on both the north and south sides. And the connection for the sewer is out towards Albany Post Road. And gas and electric, these are provided by Con Edison. And the gas connection is proposed off of Craft Lane. And then the electric connection is proposed off of Albany Post Road shown in red. So we've had a lot of coordination with the village to provide alternative lighting since we originally had proposed. So what's shown towards the top left of the page is it's a fluted pole, so it's kind of got divots throughout. And then this is a post-top light which we thought was ornamental and coordinated with the village. And what we're looking to provide in this area is the four which are closest to Albany Post Road, which run parallel with the roadway and where the sidewalk area is. These poles are proposed to have banner arms and then also have electrical outlets within them. This is just a blow-up, kind of a detailed plan showing the lighting levels that are proposed. So the lighting, even though no poles are proposed off the property, they do provide light in all directions. And there is lighting that we'll provide for the sidewalk area. So moving into keeping lighting through is this is the similar, the same bower that we're proposing around the adjacent to the sidewalk. We're proposing it within the courtyard area to kind of bring through similar lighting items. And then these are just a few other lights that we're looking to propose within the courtyard. It would be kind of scaled down. Instead of an 18 and a half foot pole-mounted light, it would be down towards a 10, 12-foot. And just some other lighting onsite planters or different wall areas. And just one more kind of showing different lighting practices to kind of break up the space in the courtyard and still provide lighting. All right. And moving into landscaping is we're providing landscaping throughout the property, including in the wetland buffer area and a variety of different trees, ground covers, grasses and shrubs. And we did receive a comment today and we were reviewing our planning schedule. Just a few items that we're going to swap out to be native as there were a few grasses or shrubs. But the majority of the planting which has been proposed throughout is a native species. So we're just going to review the list and just get the few that weren't and update that. So this is zooming in towards the wetland buffer area. And what we're also looking to remove is invasives and treat anything that is there so that when we put it back, it's really beautified towards the pond area within the wetland buffer. And the disturbance that we are proposing is really just for the fire access road. There's a sidewalk which goes around for circulation for access for the building. And there's stormwater management practices which are subsurface. And this is just a proposed monument sign for the project. Then moving towards the off-site improvements, so what we're proposing off-site is a sidewalk along our frontage, which would extend across the hardware store. And then there will be a proposed crosswalk with signage and this is all being reviewed by NYSDOT. And we have provided site distance analysis along with this and different signing for them to continue their review. So along the frontage, this is just kind of a section showing how the road is all the way on the left. There's a spacing and the sidewalk and then there's some shrubs, trees and then the parking lot area. So what we're looking to provide between the sidewalk right away and then the parking lot is a visual screening with shrubbery and there will be the trees and then different ground covers. We were reviewing this to see if we could put in a stone wall based on comments last month. But with it only being 10-foot separation and there's the lighting, trees and different other utilities, we just don't feel like there's enough room to provide the stone wall and have different screening techniques and provide all these other different utilities. So what we are looking to do and on the next slide. So we just want to show some of the examples of what we're providing in this area. So in the bottom-left corner is the trees which we are proposing. The street trees all parallel Albany Post Road. And then we have a nice hedge which will go in between these trees to visually break up the area. And then also kind of mixed in there would be this ground cover planting. So we believe that this would provide screening, I mean screening of the parking lot area. And then additionally, this is based on meeting with NYSDOT for off-site improvements. We're working and coordinating with the adjacent property owner. But we will be looking to provide a sidewalk from our frontage to connect to the existing sidewalk which is south of the site across the neighboring property. And then just to wrap up, these are a few renderings of views of the courtyard area. So there's a pergola, pool, gardening area, barbecue. So just some of the elements which are being brought into the courtyard area. If there's one more slide and that's it. So this is kind of a review of overall the site plan. And if you have any questions, I think that was it for our presentation.
So that does conclude the presentation. I think I'll just sum up a little bit. We've been together now for, it's more than a year. We started last January. You can tell from the summary slides that we go over that this has been a very, very thorough process, that every one of those slides represent studies that were done before you adopted your findings as lead agency in each one of those particular categories where our experts put forth plans and proposals. Your experts came back with their suggestions. There have been numerous comments from this board, from the planning board, from your professionals, where we have not only responded but made changes to the plan and created documents responsive to that wherever possible in order to do this. So what I'd like to summarize by saying and before we open it to the public, that despite that and as long as we've been here and as much work we've been doing it together, my client is still extremely bullish on doing this large investment in your community, which is an important thing to remember. This represents a very significant investment and believes strongly that this is going to be for the benefit of the village. We outlined some of those. And we think this project is a lot better than when we started because of all of these comments and this work that we've done together with your board and your professionals that it's been improved. And we think it's at a point now that we can be very proud to go ahead and finance and construct. So we are looking forward to the comments that will come from the public. I will make one mention on the procedure if I might make a suggestion that might be easier for some people that are here. Because of the error that was made on the notice, I have seen it done before and it is legal. If you want to make a resolution tonight to make this record which is being recorded part of the record of the public hearing next month, those people don't have to come back again if you don't want them, if they don't want to come back again. So just for convenience purposes, it's not necessary. They can come back and talk again next month. But you could move to make all of the process that went forward before you tonight part of the record next time and then it will be part of the record and you don't have to have it repeated. So just a suggestion.
I think the presentation, we had a presentation last month, this presentation. So I think the presentation for next month, it's not needed. We also, you know, film it so people can see it on YouTube or on our channels. The other thing is with that, I personally, even if that was an error, I wouldn't have felt comfortable with such a large project like this to close the public hearing this evening anyhow. So it kind of worked out. So of course, next month, people can still come and comment further. So it's, you know. The other thing is I just want to make sure that you've addressed all the concerns of the fire department with their.
They're here, so we'll make sure of that.
Yeah. Because if the board is looking to approve it next month, we want to make sure that they're okay with whatever plans that you have. One of the things I wanted to talk about was the pedestrian area, the southern area. How large of a walk space is that?
Can we put that back up? The width of the walkway?
Yeah, the width.
Yeah, the sidewalks are six feet around the site.
No, no. I mean, just past the hardware store between the other commercial building. Isn't there a walkway in between both properties there, between the hardware store and?
Yeah, it's proposed as a six-foot wide.
Six-foot? Oh, still six-foot. Okay. I didn't know. And that's going to be gravel, you said?
Yeah, so that area, just due to some stormwater concerns, we're proposing it as a gravel walking path within a staircase that does connect out to the sidewalk off the site.
Okay. And I don't remember what it looked like. Are there a few benches there for people?
No benches, just a walking path to connect out to the sidewalk.
Perhaps a few benches. It's a thought. You know, people could sit there also.
We can review.
All right. Thank you. And I don't know if we should have this discussion tonight, but about the proposed retail or the lack of proposed retail.
By the way, we have no objection to benches.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think that would be nice. I have a few other things, aesthetic things.
On the retail, just mentioning again, excuse me, we've had this discussion previously. When we look at it, in order to fit it with the building that's there, in order to do it, we would need more parking. In order to do the parking, we would have to significantly cut into the steep slopes, some of the severe steep slopes and steep slopes that are there in the middle of the site. It can be done. It's not something that we were excited about. We don't necessarily have a retail tenant at the moment. But the proposed compromise, so to speak, was we did design the site so that the retail can be put there in the future. We believe, from what our professionals tell us, that we may be and wind up overparked. I know it sounds strange. It's one and a half per unit and that sounds right, you know, roughly two for two bedrooms, ones for one bedrooms, et cetera, and how that works. But as the world goes on, and I'm learning this in other communities more and more, people have less cars. They just do. It's just the way the world is working with Uber and all these other things that are starting to make their way into northern Westchester. And with trains that are available, those things happen. So if in the future, that trend continues as it is in some of the other places and it turns out that we have extra parking spaces available that we can utilize through shared parking, retail parking, that's there without having to go into the steep slopes which we've looked at, you know, for a long period of time now. We'd be willing to do that. We'd be willing to do it. So that's how it's been designed. It's, look, it's in, and just so you know, it's to our advantage. If we can put retail there. I know you're looking at it for a look. For us, if we have a retail tenant that's paying to be there, that's great. We'd be happy to do it. It just, at the moment, it doesn't work on the site.
So if it doesn't happen, so you would be asking for a variance because that's in our overlay district to have that?
Actually, no. We don't need a variance and we have looked at this now a couple of times. And the overlay that we have, I do not believe it's required. That's my view and we can go through it.
Well, I sat on this board when we did the overlay district. And you know, I will tell you something, the property next to you, they are complying with that, with that part of the overlay district of having a commercial space.
We will be happy to share it with your council. I don't have it in front of me today. We have looked at this previously. If we needed a variance and we went through it and had these conversations, we would have done that already. We don't need it.
So you're not proposing, so we might as well say that you won't have any retail space there. Because I will tell you this, I understand what your parking space is, what you're saying. I understand that. But you have built in lower Westchester County, correct? What are some, where some, you've done some of your buildings?
Well, I've got 30,000 units in my office right now that we're working on.
But mostly lower Westchester?
No, no. We've done a lot in northern Westchester.
Okay.
A lot. We've done it in Somers. We've done it in Osning. We've done it in, well, it depends on what you call northern west, North Castle, Newcastle. We can keep going through the list, but I've been in most municipalities in Westchester that we've done work.
Because we just changed our code for the winter parking. We did not allow people to park on the street in the winter. But what we were finding, some of the residents were having issues with parking on the property. So it just kind of goes to show that there's never enough parking. And when you're talking about your other, I know, I know, Mark, I know what you have, you have to sell for your client. I understand.
No, actually.
But what's happening, when you go down lower Westchester County, they have mass transportation. We don't have that here. So most families that we see here, you know, it's a husband and wife. They both have a car.
I'm going to make two points. One, these things were settled when this board as lead agency did its environmental determination back in September. The issue of the parking ratio and the parking code, we are compliant with the parking ratio that is in your zoning code. I let you finish. Please let me finish.
Yes, absolutely. I'm waiting for you to finish.
But as far as whether or not your zoning code accurately depicts the required parking that should be needed here, I can assure you that our client would not have signed off. We think it would be less. And we would not have signed off on that number because we can't rent apartments if we don't have enough parking spaces for the tenants that are coming. So we have no intention of creating a project that doesn't have enough parking for the building. So we do rely on experts. I'm not a parking expert. I can only tell you what happened in the other place. I agree with you. When you go down in White Plains, these other places that we're talking about, their parking ratio is below 1.0 in some of the places that are near the trains. You're at 1.5. Now, is it lower than what it was at this point? You don't have a project like this anywhere in your community. This is new to you. So the answer is you have to rely on places where we have done this. We have done this on Route 6 in Somers. We have done this on Route 9 in Osning. We have done projects like this in communities that are similar to yours that don't have that mass transit that you're talking about. And these ratios work, so we're comfortable with it.
I'm just, you know, I'm hearing from different residents, the concerns are it might not be enough parking. They don't want to see people parking on Lindsay Avenue or other parts of Craft Lane. So it's a concern. That has been brought up. I understand what you said before. But it's a concern that was brought up and I just wanted to bring that back up.
You may remember when we made our original proposal, we proposed a 1.35 parking ratio. You pushed us to 1.5. We're okay with it. But that was the, that was what was, when it was raised, we did make changes.
But I think it's safe to say, under the circumstances, I don't think we're going to see retail on that property.
I'm not sure you're right. It's possible. I'm not sure you're right. But as I've said many times on this, again, it depends on how you view it. In my opinion, we have retail on our property. It may not be our property, but it's the hardware store. And it basically is, all of our frontage is the hardware store that's there. So from the matter of fact, if you're looking at it from site-specific, we do have retail on, you know, on our property that's in front of our property before you get to, before you get to the, before you get to Albany Post Road. So as far as I'm concerned, from planning purposes, we satisfy the planning elements, whether it's legally there or not, different issue. But I will say, I believe that we satisfy the planning principles.
I would have to say legally, it's not there and I'm not an attorney, as we all know. But are you still in conversations with the hardware store? Because I know one time you did have a conversation with them about.
We've been talking to them repeatedly, but they're still in business, doing their business. We've made, as you can see, we have walking paths and things that are going back and forth. We've created an easement for them so they could legalize parking that they use on our property for many years. They've been using parking on property illegally that we now have legalized and allowed them to do. So we've been and we are working together with them to make this a project that works for everyone.
So I heard what you said, that you feel that you already have the retail, but it's not your property. So.
If you're asking me to say.
I think what we're saying, I think what we're saying is, let's all be honest here, there's not going to be any retail there. I am not a traffic expert. I just, I've lived here my whole life. I see what happens, you know. You're not going to have one car per unit.
We wasted an awful lot of money in response to your questions to design the site to permit it. We have tried to accommodate every reasonable request of this board. And when you requested, even though we told you, we didn't need it, we didn't want it, we didn't have it, we spent time, money and effort to create it so that it could be done in the future. So it's a little bit frankly insulting for you to say, let's just admit that it's not going to happen. We worked very hard at it and we don't make comments and we don't say things that we don't believe in. So we believe that there's a possibility to happen, but if you want to go out there and say it's never going to happen, the proposal doesn't contain it. That's accurate. And the site plan that's before you doesn't contain it. But you asked us to show you an alternative for a future use and we've designed it and spent money on it. I think we've done our job.
I think I have a right to comment what I want to comment on.
You do.
I've lived here my whole life and for you to get angry at me for what I said, I'm sorry for that. But I have a right to make my own comments. And I'm looking at the project. I'm trying to be open-minded and look at it. But I just don't, I'm sorry. I don't see it. So, you know, the board will make the decision. Basically, it's just the site plan now that has to get approved. But there are concerns with that and too late for that now. But there are also concerns with the traffic on 9A. There's different concerns. So I just want to have the conversations so that everyone understands what's happening. So I'm sorry you got angry with me.
I didn't.
But I have a, yeah, Mark, I know you a long time. But I have a, yeah, Mark, I know you a long time. So, you know, but people are gonna get up to speak also. They have their opinions too.
Yes, I, I, but.
I also wanted to ask a few other, other things. The landscaping, one of the things, I know the gentleman just went over that, but I had mentioned last week something about to do more of a buffer on the 9A, to, you know, to kind of cover the parking lot area a little more. And you have trees that leaves will fall, so the winter months, there won't be that much of a buffer. So is there any way that to buffer it a little better, to put more of a Abervady, an evergreen type tree?
Yeah, we, we can look to put our, an Abervady type screening, like as a taller tree or as the lower shrub? Because we were trying to place the lower shrubs to wake up the, the lower view, and then we thought that the deciduous trees were, were nice for street trees, but we can look for.
We could kind of stagger them behind the, the shrubs a little bit, just, just a little more of a buffer, because the other trees look great, but the problem is, you know, the leaves are gonna fall. So half of the year, you're gonna, you're gonna see most of the parking lot.
Okay, understood.
Let's see, what else did I have? Retail's out, southern pedestrian. Oh, one of the big things, I know the woman was here at the first meeting. She lives across the street on Craft Lane. So that's a huge concern. She's saying that she's having flooding and ponding issues, so that, that we, you know, George, our engineer, and, and I just want to make sure that she doesn't have any issues of runoff, of water runoff or anything like that.
Excuse me, Mayor of Trustees. The drainage that they propose is coming off of the parking lot, off of their parking lot into an existing drainage system and down the street. So nothing's coming across the driveway into her yard. Nothing's gonna exacerbate her condition. She has a driveway that goes down. It goes to a garage below. There's a pipe that goes from that garage. I know Bob's looked at it. We've seen, she's written us about it. And it goes from that lower garage, from a trough drain, all the way out to the street to a, a head wall. And if you notice, on their plan, they're actually improving that head wall, and the water's gonna probably run out of there better from what they can do without going onto her property.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's a concern. She was here, so I want to make sure that's addressed.
I had the DPW guys take a look at it. They, she has a drainage system on her home property that has not been cleaned out. So the water has no place to drain. So if she cleaned out her grates, the water would drain properly and not go into our basement.
So those grates are on her property or village?
Her property, her property.
All right, all right. I just wanted to make sure that was addressed. That's all. Also, I wanted to know the distance from the building to where the railroad tracks are and also the Con Ed transmission lines? Do you roughly have a, I don't need exact, like, is it twenty feet, thirty feet?
Where, it's, it's over a hundred feet to the transmission lines, and then the nine, nine is past that even further, right? We, we can give you the distances, I just don't.
No, I, I just, you know, a hundred, roughly a hundred feet. That's, that's fine. Okay. All right, that's all I have for now. I'm sure I'll have more for you next month. Any other board members have any comments before we open it up to the, to the public?
Yeah, I do. Mark, thank you for coming in. Thank you for the great presentation. The, the building products you're using are, are good products. I see that they are. I just want to make sure that the trades are as good as, as the product. You know, I want to make sure we're using good quality. If, I hope we are going in a union trade direction because I believe that will give us the best for our village. I know it's not something you can answer now, or you can. As far as the, the, the retail space, I know that we have spoke about it. And I know that you have given me the best answer that you can at this time. We've given you the, the steep slope to work into, to build your parking lot out. And I hope that you're sincere, and I believe that you are, about future building, retail space for us. I mean, it would, would benefit you just as much as us, and just like you said. So I, I believe you're sincere. I think that, that it is something that your, your, your development is gonna need, and, and our village is gonna need, just for the occupancy of that building itself. So I agree that it, it, it does fall. It's, it's, it's gonna be kind of an eyesore to have this, just this big parking lot there. But I believe that your landscape and everything will hide it for now, but I hoped in the future that you will move into that retail space like we spoke about. And I'm, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm hopeful that you will do it, so. As far as anything else, the landscaping and everything, it looks great, looks great. I feel that everything is, is native. And the rock wall, you're gonna use rock from the site, I believe, which is good to hear. I'd just like to see the trades get involved with this, with this development. I really would. I think it's good because we are a blue collar community. That is, there's a lot of retirees, but there are a lot of working men here as well. So I'd like to see the trades get involved with this development. That's all I have.
Message received. And I, I'll also mention that one of the benefits of this project, which we talked about early on, is that AMS will build this and they will own it, and they will manage it. They're gonna be here for quite some time. So they're gonna be investors in your community, continuing landowners in your community. And if there are improvements that can be made to not just for their site, but for the community as a whole, which will help them attract future tenants, they're gonna make those investments. They do that in the other communities. So I'm, I'm very confident that that's something that will happen once this is built and they own it.
And the, the management companies, you hire them yourself and you use them at your other facilities?
Management of the buildings, he goes each early?
Yeah, so.
Hi, Ryan Southland, AMS. So we have external management companies for some projects, and we do it for other projects. It really depends on what the product is. As of right now, we intend to manage the project ourselves.
And after the fact, Ryan, the, when a building is completely filled, you guys, your management.
Are you talking about construction management or building management?
I'm talking about both. Construction management, you answered that. Now, after the building is completed.
Yes, both.
Okay, anybody else on the board?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, thank you, Mark, for your, your presentation. I think, you know, you guys were in here almost two years ago. It was two years ago in April, and it was a much different project then. I know personally, when I first took a look at it, I said, you know, it looks a little big, you know, sharpening your pencils, and you did that. You, you changed the whole look, changed the design, the entire project. And you've listened to not only this board, but the planning board, and made changes along the way. So we appreciate it. Now looking forward to hear what the public has to say. And appreciate the investment into our community. So thank you.
Hi, I think we're good. And I also want to say that the planning board did a phenomenal job. I have the questions that you had answered for them, and they really, they really did their due diligence reviewing the plans. Would anyone like to speak on this project? You can, you can just come up and just state your name? Nobody? Okay, 'cause we, we will have the public hearing. Hi, hi, Eileen. We will have the public hearing also on March 5th.
I can't believe nobody wants to say anything. You all came to here, and you have a voice.
We're counting on you, Eileen.
Well, no, I, I just want to know, I'm not here as a planning board meeting member, planning, so I can speak.
You're here as a resident.
Correct? Okay, I want to speak to this gentleman here. Marcus, can you pull up? I don't know your first name. Kevin. Kevin's, um. I'm looking for the diagram of the entrance with the canopy and the arrows.
That wasn't Kevin's presentation. That was Stu's. That was Stu's.
Okay, right there. No, the next one, that one. Okay. Oh, it's not on there. Oh, it's on the other side. Okay. You can see, all right. So my point, I'm wondering, I'm looking at coming out of this. This seems like a, an awkward turn. Just thinking of trucks or big, big vehicles or anything of that nature. I'm wondering.
I need the, the trucks. This is the area for all the larger vehicles within the, the loading area, so the trucks would come in and out of here. Trucks wouldn't be circulating around.
Go back into the loading area.
You've got two ways to get in here. This is just the one way.
Yep.
It just doesn't look like, and you've got to make this right, pan turn.
Yeah, so we were also trying to. I think we can review opening up that turn. And then we, we're just trying to keep it lined up, because if you are going to this other parking area, you can get over here. But, but yeah, we can look to.
It just looks awkward to me.
We can look at that.
Thank you. That's it. Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Oh, Diane's coming.
I just want to say that I've been watching this for a long time, and I'm very much in favor of it, and I thank you for all the hard work that this board and the planning board has done, and I think it will be a benefit to our village.
Can you just put your name?
Diane Tangen, 240 Catherine Street.
Thank you. Okay. So if there are no more comments or questions, I'd like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing on March 5th, 2024 regarding the special permit and site plan for AMS. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, David, is this something where you would prepare the resolution in advance, so that way, because I know it takes quite some time to get that ready?
At, at the direction of the village board, if you direct staff to prepare a resolution in advance, that could be done.
I'd like to make a motion to direct David to prepare a resolution.
Second.
All in favor? So you will have that prepared for us before the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, the next is motion to enter into an agreement with Westchester County for the voting machines. So the, I'd like to make a motion, the.
I'm sorry, you don't need David and Phil when you want, correct?
I don't think so. I don't think so. I think we're good.
You want to keep George for the grant discussion? You want to talk about grants?
Yeah, you know what? I might switch the agenda around so that George doesn't have to go through this whole meeting.
Phil and Dave can leave if they want to.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming. We'll see you next month. Okay, the, the county shall provide the village with goods and services consisting of electronic voting machines and privacy booths approved by the New York State Board of Elections, the voting systems, and related services, including the technicians necessary to operate and maintain the voting systems of the village's elections that will be conducted by the village on March 19th, 2024. The work to be performed by the county is more particularly described in Schedule A. In consideration of the work, the village shall, at its sole cost and expense, transport the voting systems from the county storage facility to the village polling places and subsequently return to the county storage facility, as well as provide all goods and services necessary for the village to conduct its elections, including staff for polling locations and printed ballots. The method of transportation of the voting systems, including the use of any third-party contractors, which will be Ron's trucking. So I'd like to make a motion to, to enter an agreement with Westchester County for the use of voting machines for March 19th, 2024 general election. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Also, I'm going to make a motion to appoint election inspectors for the March 19th, 2024 general village election at a rate of $300 for inspector and 150 for the alternate. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next is a motion authorizing the mayor to sign the intermunicipal agreement with the county regarding the enhanced 911 service, and it is a five-year contract. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have, we do this once a year. The motion to approve the, to approve the volunteer firefighters that have met the required 50 points for the service award program. So looking at that, we have sixteen people that have earned, that have earned their points for the, the service award system. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the volunteer firefighters that have met the required 50 points for the service award program as provided by the Village of Buchanan Fire Department. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Mayor, I'm gonna abstain from this. I am one of the recipients.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
And Mayor, just for the board's information, I got the entire packet of all, everything they attended, the detail.
Oh, good.
It's down in the finance department in case any board members want to come take a look at it.
Okay. The details. Okay, good. All right, so, and next month, we will have our new volunteers who are, are coming into the fire department, and they will be at the next meeting. The new camp rates. So Buchanan resident, first or second session, the fee is $335. Buchanan resident, both section, sessions, $620. Buchanan resident sibling, first or second session, $301. Buchanan resident siblings, both sessions, $558. Non-resident, first or second session, $503. Non-resident, both sessions, $956. Non-resident sibling, first or second session, $452. And non-resident siblings, both sessions, the fee will be $860. And registration for camp is this month. Do you remember which date it is? I think it's the, I don't want to say the wrong date. I think it's the. Yeah, I wanted to, yeah, I don't want to say the dates, because I'm thinking it's the, Cindy's gonna get that information, just so everyone's aware and you want to register for camp.
Buchanan residence is February 27th and 29th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and non-residence is March 5th and 6th. No, it's March 5th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the new camp rates. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Marcus, I don't know if you want to speak to this, to the cost of the digital sign?
Sure, we've been talking about this for, for some time. I know trustee Wheeler brought it up. Provided the board again with the, the, the design of the digital sign. The sign is $21,165. The problem was couldn't find an electrician. We finally got an electrician, and I actually worked with Bob today, Fanny Electric. Was the only electrician out of eight of them that I met, where they gave me a proposal finally. The pole, the price for the electric is $2,346.32. He'll run it to a light pole, and I saw Bob where it was. So it's, if you're coming out of village hall, on the left-hand side of the sidewalk as you're coming down towards Tate Avenue. And so we're thinking about putting it there. If the board wants to approve, approve the expense, at least I can order the sign because of a couple of weeks. If you want to move it again, just let me know. We can move it, or we can discuss it some more, whatever the board wants to do at this point. But that's the location, Bob. I showed you the signs where the location was. So I don't know if the board has any other ideas of changes someplace else, or moving forward or not moving forward, you let me know.
I'd like to walk out there with you guys and maybe just all have the same, same thoughts on the location. That's all.
And if any other board members want to join at that time, so let the whole board know, Marcus.
Sure.
And I thought, when we discussed last week, I thought we discussed out of the circle. That, that's changed?
Well, the problem was that.
It's too sided.
One-sided. Now that confirms it's two-sided. You put it the circle, it's gonna be harder to see. Now, again, if another location the board wants to put it in, that's fine as well.
Can always be moved, which is good. It's not a permanent.
We just got, we just got electricity, gotta get electricity to it.
Okay.
I know that we did discuss the circle also. You know, I'm not sure myself if that's a good spot for it only because of the tree. I'm looking at the hearts out, out there right now, which are roughly 40 high. That's how high this is here. I'm just kind of having trouble visioning it being in person myself. I'm only one person. You guys can also put your two cents on it. I'm fine with that. It should be a group decision.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, we'll take a look and.
Lovely. Okay, good. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the cost of the digital sign, which is $21,160. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next is, we last year had sold the. we, uh, last year had sold the property, um, on the corner of Blakely Avenue and nine A. And, uh, what we're doing here is, um, we're amending the contract, uh, for the sale of the village land with J N, G A N C Associates. Whereas on October fourth, twenty twenty-three, the Village of Buchanan entered into a contract of sale with J, Jank Associates for the sale of village-owned property described as being located the northwest corner of Albany Post Road and Blakely Avenue, Buchanan, New York, which provided in part that the buyer's due diligence, due diligence period has expired in one hundred and twenty days. Whereas the buyer has requested that the due diligence period be extended to May first, twenty twenty-four. Whereas the village agrees to extend the due diligence period as requested by the buyer. Now therefore be resolved that the due diligence period described in the contract of sale between the Village of Buchanan and Jank Associates dated October fourth, twenty twenty-three is amended to extend the due diligence period to May first, twenty twenty-four. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You? Okay. I know George Latimer has been very involved in this, and we talked about this at the workshop, but, um, what they're trying to do, the M T A is looking at establishing a west, westside access from Westchester County in the Bronx through the Hudson Line to Penn Station. So if they do this, this would be phenomenal, instead of getting off at Grand Central and wandering around the city to Penn Station, there would be more of a direct access, so it would be a good thing. So, um, I'd like to make a motion, um, a, a resolution recommending the M T A evaluate establishing westside access from Westchester County in the Bronx through the Hudson Line to Penn Station. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, next we're going to talk about grants. Um, I was in Albany yesterday and one of the sessions there was about grants. And I found out yesterday that, uh, I know George, our engineer, had mentioned the I M G and the W I A grants, which is, the W I A is the Water Infrastructure Improvement Grant. Um, that's opened yesterday, I found out, and that has to be submitted by June fourteenth. And we're also eligible for the I M G, which is an intermunicipal grant, and that's also the same timeframe. So, um, and I think the W I A grant, there's three hundred and twenty-five million that's available, this round of the W I A grant. Uh, the W Q I P, which is a D E C grant. We didn't get the total max, this is for the sewer treatment plant. So we didn't get the total max of what they thought they would give us, they, there's only so much money available, so we ended up getting one point six million. And, um, these other grants, the W I A and the I M G, which we can, uh, also submit for, uh, is done through the Environmental Facilities Corporation. So, um, I know Marcus had looked at, um, having a grant writer do that. So, uh, what is the board's pleasure with putting in these, these grants again?
If, I mean, before, before we get that, just to get the numbers for the public to know, um, so, uh, W, so a W Q I P grant, the proposal is forty-six hundred dollars. For the W I A grant and for the, um, I M G grant, it's forty-two hundred dollars.
Each?
Each one, yes. And just to respond to also, uh, trustee Stewart asked what other communities are doing around us. The Village of Croton has a grant writer, it's on between four to six thousand dollars per application, that's what the Village of Croton pays. The town of Cortland and the town of Yorktown, uh, uh, in negotiations are looking at grant writers, they haven't chose anybody yet, so they're going through that process. So if the, if the board wants to move forward with a grant writer, I would recommend move faster because now all, all the grants are released, there'll be a lot of competition to get, there's only a certain number of grant writers, so if you want to do a grant writer, the earlier you do it, the better you can do it, so you can start all doing paperwork together.
So the W Q I P grant that we received the one point six million dollars for, did a grant writer prepare that?
Yes, the same grant writer proposal that he, that, the same grant writer that gave you a proposal, the same grant writer who wrote that proposal, that grant application at that point.
Got you. And the seven point five million that we failed to receive, we did not have a grant writer submit that?
That's correct.
Was that a decision, do, do we just not reach out to this grant writer or?
What's seven point five million, I'm confused.
Uh, no, the, uh, we, we're referring to is the, uh, the estimate, for the latest estimate for-
To rehab.
To rehab.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was six million originally, but, you know.
It moved up a little bit. And we added, we added the, um, uh, Albany Post Road pump station, so. No, uh, we had a meeting with, uh, who was it? The D E C. They came down, they met with us and they said, oh, we, we were talking about grants and they said, okay, you know, you can go for the W Q I P, go for it again. Make some minor changes to it, make sure it looks a little different than the original one. And submit that. So there wasn't a lot of work to that, so we did it. So, so we were asked, oh, can you just make some of these minor modifications and resubmit? So that, that grant was, was this one, it was that big, long pa, long booklet. We made a change, you know, ten percent of it and then submitted it. So that's, that's how that all came about and how we, how we went about that. And then we had the subsequent meeting with, uh, D E C. And they said, if you want to resubmit on the W Q I P, you're going to have to repackage it and chunk off, I think what they said, chunk it off and, um, show that the original one point six that you got, show work to do that one point six and then submit another grant for a different portion of the project. So they basically said, repackage it and submit it to us, but they weren't very, they didn't have a very strong, um, recommendation on doing that. They were more inclined to, um, wh- while we asked them, can we submit for the grants, does it affect our, our W Q I P grant? And they said, no, it doesn't affect your Q I P grant, you can submit for the W I A, we encourage you to submit for the W I A. So, um, that's where we ended up, uh, going for this W I A grant. A lot of the information that's in here, um, C T Ma, we, we give a lot of the information to C T Ma. They add some stuff to it, they put some information in there, so we-
Absolutely, I mean, you, you guys are the engineers, you do a fantastic job at the engineering, but I just think it was a, you know, looking at it after the fact, it was a disservice that we didn't have a grant writer actually prepare the grant and put his, you know, put our best foot forward.
Yeah, uh, in that conversation that we had with, with-
Who's we? Who requested you to write that grant? That's what Steve's asking.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, it was the mayor, myself and Marcus, uh, I don't know if you-
We've been discussing this at board meetings, we have discussing, putting this-
But we successfully received the grant by using a grant writer, and then the next time we decide, somebody decided not to use a grant writer and we were unsuccessful. So I'm just trying to understand why we didn't use a grant writer the second time around. If we were successful in the first time, we should have used them the second time.
George, how, how many grants have you submitted, water grants in the past?
But George, are you a grant writer?
We-
You're an engineer, your firm's an engineer.
George is an engineer, he's basically done the whole, the whole engineering of it, yes. And George has submitted grants before. Yes, I can, thank you, I'm trying to speak to George.
I'm interested to hear what he has to say.
Okay, fine, I'm sorry, I will, I will comment later.
A number of grants for the village, uh, everywhere from, um, the C B D G, uh, T twenty-one, probably at least twenty grants over the years for the village. Some of them successful, some of them not. So, in, in the discussion, it was with the D E C at the time, when they came down, we visited with them, they said, make these changes, you can go for it. And we, we went for the, for the, uh, W Q I P because they had the largest match. So they have, and now, the new, uh, W I A, the match went from twenty-five percent to fifty percent, so that's, that's good. That, you have potential to get even more now than you did if you went for the last one. So, and they mentioned in the meeting, they tweak them a little bit every time they put them out to target certain, um, issues that they're trying to ju, uh, trying to address, like this one. They were also targeting the, um, P F O S, the P F O S issue, so this is not only water, it's wastewater as well, so, um, but there's a bigger pot of money.
I understand that, but a, a grant writer be familiar with the nuances that, that they may re, require.
Yes.
And as, as an engineer, they were like, you know, rely upon you to provide the engineering for it, but they get into the details and they, they kind of see what, what's needed. And I just think that, you know, not using a grant writer, it proved, it clearly was not the right decision.
And, um, and what the, uh, grant folks said too is you wouldn't have scored enough to, um, comply either, so, to, to meet the, you wouldn't have gotten enough points. Basically, because you need to repackage and redo everything and, um, and you wouldn't have enough points based on other applications. They had two hundred and fifty applications for sixty-two counties and over five hundred municipalities, so it's, it's very competitive.
And it would have been an added resource to you and your firm to kind of bolster our application and hopefully we would have been successful. But unfortunately, we didn't go that route.
Correct.
So that's-
That's correct.
Okay.
I know, we have discussed these grants in nauseam.
We have discussed them.
Yeah.
And, so-
I think it was the decision whether to go with a grant writer or not, I think, is, is what, uh, trustee Laker is going with.
That we never discussed.
That we didn't discuss, so we never said, we're, no, we, we, we didn't discuss going-
That was the direction, like, we've been discussing this, the board never said anything about that, now I'm hearing it now. And possibly, George, there was an issue with your submission.
Yes, correct.
That, so we don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know, um, what happened is, there was something omitted on the engineering side. And so basically, they looked at our, our, uh, the D E C looked at, at the grant and saw that that was omitted. So immediately, we were tossed to the curb because something was omitted from there. Had nothing to do with the grant end of it, but it was, it was omitted. So they told us the end of August, September, they, uh, were not reviewing it any further. So we have no idea where the points would have come in also.
Yeah.
Um, at that point, so, because they didn't review it any further because it was an incomplete application.
But we were successful for the first one.
Yes, we were.
Well, can I comment, please?
Sure.
I think we're missing the bigger picture here because it wasn't agreed upon by the board. It wasn't discussed as a board and decided upon as a board.
I thought we, I thought we all were on the same page of, okay, I'll vote.
Writer never came up.
I will, see, so, it's election time, folks, so I'm going to take the heat for everything.
What does that have to do with it?
So, I will go back through all of the meetings and look, because we've had these discussions and I will find the parts of the meetings. So, you know what, and if, if we had gotten approved, then that would have been okay. But George has submitted grants before, it's not something-
Said him, Marcus, and you made the decision, he just said that.
Actually, Marcus wasn't there, I, it's-
Okay, so who was in the room with you, George?
It was me, um-
The D E C and we were, it wasn't, it wasn't then because we-
By who to finish out the grant and re, and, and reconfigure it to submit it?
That would be the mayor.
Thank you.
And I said, at that meeting, we were meeting with the D E C to go over the grant. We were going over what they would like to see in the grant. There was other people on the board that could have been there too.
Probably weren't notified.
Oh, is that the same thing when, I'm not even going to go there, I'm, I'm going to be, I'm going to be professional, I'm not going to do it, so.
Because you're not professional.
So, excuse me?
You're not professional.
Oh, I'm not professional.
You just yelled at a lawyer for doing something that-
That lawyer, that lawyer who does not work for us, we defend the village. That lawyer works for a company that wants to do business here in the village. There has been no pushback against this company. Somebody needs to push back against this developer.
Eighteen months later, you decide to do it?
I've been pushing back and saying things all along, the rest of this board is like, yeah, this is great, just do it, just do it. I have so, I have questioned things. Oh, here, I'm, you know what, guys, we're not going to get into the political of this. I'm not feeding into your politics. It absolutely is. I have been commenting all along, so let's stop. And even if I didn't comment all along, I have absolutely every right to say what I want to say. I will not be shut down on this board. I will not have people tell me what to do or what to say or what to think. I'm an independent thinker and I will say what's on my mind, whether it was the first month or eighteen months. I have absolutely every right to say that, I wish more people would speak up. So, I will go back to the films and see when we discussed about the grants and I will get back to everybody.
Just to provide additional information for the board, um, if we apply for the I, uh, I M G grant and the W I A grant, you can't get both. You only get one or the other, just to let you know, you can apply for both, you only can get one or the other. And the I M G, I M G has to be a I M A agreement, which you have, but also has to be a distressed community. So we might be on the cusp of that as well. And that's up to forty percent. The W I A grant is up to fifty percent possibly, so I talked to the E F C and they say, if you get both, we can figure out which one is better and then we'll pick the right one, so just to let you know. So that, that way people know we can get all three grants, we can maximum get when you get two, so, okay.
So, but with the I M G, now I know what you're saying, but the I M G, you know, since the town of Cortland is, uh, has, has the ability now to use our sewer treatment plant a hundred thousand gallons a day, so that's why I thought, you know, um, because we have that intermunicipal agreement with them.
Yeah, and that's up to forty percent, so if we do qualify for the fifty percent W I A grant, then we give my vote of fifty percent. I'm just saying that we can get I M G and-
We'll just have to look at all the options.
Absolutely, that's what I'm saying, so. So depending on how the board wants to decide, um, the grant writer just let me know.
All right, I think that's, that's pretty obvious what we're doing. So when we, um, with the grants, so they would be every grant, it would be the W Q I P, the W I I A, and the I M G. You're looking for a grant writer. Okay. Any further discussion on that?
So do we have to approve the grants?
You have to approve the grant writer for all three grants, that's all, if the board is going in that direction.
I do not have a, let me just find, uh, let me just find the, um-
Do you want me to give you the amounts or?
Yeah, that's, I'm looking for, I, you know, I don't have a resolution here for that.
Yeah, there's no, there's a motion, W Q I P will be forty-six hundred, the W I A will be forty-two hundred, and the I, I M G will be forty-two hundred. That'll be, that'll be all three grants.
And the, the name of the company again, the grant writer?
C T Meyer Associates.
C T Mail.
Mail Associates, Mail Associates.
And Marcus, just for the record, what, what, do we have the number that we paid George to do that grant? Was there a number? Or was it, was it like a time and material?
It was probably a lot less than the four grand, it was probably.
And that was just for revisions though?
It's just for revision, so that was only probably, it was probably less than a thousand dollars, so.
And you know what, I, I wanted to ask too, because we had at the last meeting, we had a discussion, and I know we had this discussion with George about resubmitting the grant, and then there was an agreement made that George would do the grant, resubmit the grant at his cost because of the error. So is that something the board was still interested in from last time, or do you want to go for a grant writer? Is that what we're doing? So I just want to know what we're doing.
I'm not interested in that, I'm interested in getting the grant writer.
Absolutely, that was before I was aware that, you know, we use a grant writer to receive the one point six million previously.
Yeah, if we had, if we had success the first time around, let's go with a grant writer, that's my opinion.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to, uh, hire C T Mail, um, grant writers for the W Q I P grant, it's forty-six hundred, for W, the W I A is forty-two hundred, and the I M G is forty-two hundred. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, discussion on crosswalks. We did walk with, uh, the supervisor and some of his staff, Marcus was there, George was there, and, um, we had a nice discussion on that, and the supervisor's offer was that they would pay, the town would pay half, um, for the crosswalks.
Where is it?
Oh, it's on the bottom of Bannon Avenue, so, um, Bannon and Kings Ferry. And the other one is, uh, so it's going towards the library, the other one is Tate Avenue, um, so Kings Ferry, Tate Avenue also.
Teresa, I want to tell them who, who installed the sidewalks originally, so the public know how it, you know the history about it, so.
The town of Cortland had, years ago, installed those sidewalks when they, when the library came through. So it was for walkability to the library. We got a complaint from a, a town resident, and there's, there's a lot of people in today's world that are walking, everybody's walking, walking, walking. So they felt, they, they almost got, they almost got hit in that intersection. So we were kind of put on notice to take a look at it to see- So we were kind of put on notice to take a look at it, to see, you know, to make a safety improvements on that. So we, you know, we've been talking about this. George had done a diagram of it. When we were talking to the town, to supervisor, he mentioned that we would use their engineering people to draw the plans. And I think I summed it all up, what's going on with that, right? Yeah, I didn't, I didn't miss anything. So what is the board's pleasure on that? And George, what was that, what, what was the estimate on what that would cost? Like a rough, yeah.
We used the numbers from the twenty-twenty-three Road Improvement Project. And actually, we came up with a number of about thirty-five thousand each.
Each.
Each. But what they said in the meeting was that they would solicit bidders of their own just to see if they can get a better price. So if they go out, they get a better price, you know, they'll engineer it to everything and they get a better price. You go with the splitting that better price or going with the numbers that you have from a competitive bid. So you can do that.
George, how much of the sidewalks do we own?
We own everything from Bannon down to Tate. But so the town got a CBGG grant to do the project and they got money. And they had them installed in two thousand, I think they said two thousand one.
So we had to have an agreement from the village at some point.
Yeah, some, something should have came our way. It should have been presented to the village at some point that say, yeah, we're putting this on yours. It's a CBGG, we taking it, we own it.
So there was, there was, had to be an agreement in place.
I I wasn't part of it, so, you know, we didn't design it, so.
But they maintain it.
But they maintain.
They installed it.
They installed it, correct.
Well, the majority of it on one side of the road is on their property.
Uh, on the, on the.
On the side of Bannon, the right side.
When you go down, yeah.
And how about on the Tate, Kings Ferry side, is there any?
So the, so when you go down between Bannon and and Tate, that side of it is ours. So somewhere along the line.
Just the sidewalk, but not the, the intersection is where it splits, right?
Intersection is where it splits, yeah, right.
But we're not touching the sidewalk, not that part of the sidewalk.
They are, so they're doing their side, which is on the, so we're going to say that's the east side of Tate where the bus stop is. That's, that's theirs and the rest of it down is on ours. All the way, all the way between Bannon and Tate, that's ours. That we, it's on our, it's on the village right away, so.
So the entire part of Tate Avenue and Kings Ferry Road is all of the village Buchanan?
Yeah, that's ours. Because we own to the middle of Kings Ferry, but they, they plow Kings Ferry, they do everything for the sidewalks.
So is there an existing agreement with the village and the town for these sidewalks? Because there had to be some kind of agreement to install them.
You would think so.
You would think so.
Well, I was around here back when it was all done. And all it was, was a lot of talk, people talking, we're going to put them there, we'll take care of it. That's basically what's happened, if I understand, I remember a board making an action.
So when they put in non-conforming sidewalks, that was the agreement?
Well, actually, back then, so the ADA compliance stuff.
Now, I understand with the tiles and everything.
Right.
But that exit ramp is on to Kings Ferry. If you look at the exit off of the, off of the ADA ramp, it exits more in favor of Kings Ferry.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't exit on to Tate the way it should, it should.
And what I was told was.
And that's because it was more concrete and it was because it was our property.
And it, and the county designed it from what I was told.
Well, I mean, it's, that's why I'm asking if there was some kind of agreement because the design is wrong and the placement is on our property.
And it's.
And they maintain, so for them to maintain it, I'm, that's why I'm asking, is there still an agreement in place?
Do you think the county would have something if they installed it?
That was twenty, two thousand one, that was over twenty years ago.
One of my questions would be here, if they've taken on ownership of clearing those sidewalks, didn't they take on responsibility of those sidewalks at the same time? That's a legal question, I don't know.
That's a legal question, yes.
We could look back in the minute book if you want us to. Okay, that would be.
We're not, though. They've done it, they've done it since they.
But they stopped doing it.
Right. Oh, if they stopped doing it, then our homeowner's not going to be happy.
Yeah.
And the, and the, the drawing that you presented to us.
Correct.
So their engineer accepted that drawing and and it, I, to a degree?
Yeah, he looked at it and said in concept, that makes sense to us, that, and what the board said too, is making it narrower, having it shorter is better, so.
Well, to order, in order to make the ramps conforming.
And to make the ramps conforming.
You have no, it has to come in on our property, it has to.
It has to come into, into Bannon and both into Tate because the, it's right up against the, it's so long, it's like seventy-five feet long.
Yeah, and, and.
It's a big, huge radius.
And if we don't go ahead with this, we can stripe it. But the problem is, is that the, see, what I'm saying is if we were to stripe it, it would put them in, in a position as well because their ramps are not lining up with our stripe.
Correct. So, so they've, they've decided, they, well, it was discussed that they would, their engineers would, they looked at our plan, they said it's okay in concept. We'll take it from here, we'll do the engineering, we'll put it out to bid, we'll take care of it. We'll, we'll get a bid and we'll come back to you. So that's the way.
Engineering is all on them.
Engineering is all on them. That's, the liability's on them, engineering's on them, they started it, let, let, let them.
So they're just going to send us half the bill?
Uh, well, they're gonna.
Are we going to have any say on, on the, on the bid?
So, yeah, so when you.
They want to talk to our contractor first.
So what should happen is they should complete the design, send the design to you and say, here's the design that we're putting out to bid. Are you in agreement? And then when you say, yep, it looks, this looks like what we talked about, it comes in a little, does this. And there's a, there's a metal plate out there, we don't want to go over that because that's a slipping issue. When that happens, then they, they go out to bid, they send it out, they get the bids back, they come back to you and say, okay, here, we got the bids back. Here's what it is. Do you still want to, we, we proposed paying half, is that still something that the village wants to do? So that's the way it should happen.
And they're aware of exactly what we want?
Yes.
Well, they're going to draw up the plan.
Yeah, so, so that concept of bringing them in is what they're going, and they have to make them ADA compliant as well, so. And we gave them our, we had a surveyor that we did when we submitted to you guys when Phil did a pop polls and we, we got some, it was like a twenty-three-hundred-dollar surveyor. So he said, yeah, that makes sense, we're good, we're going to take care of that, too, so. So they're getting a pretty, you know, twenty-three-hundred dollars, not a lot for surveyors, but they sounded like they were going to move forward with that just so they have the, a base to work off of. And there might be some, some property issues on Tate where the, where the sidewalk may get onto someone else's property, but they'll, they'll figure that out, so. And they'll come back to you with that as well, they should.
Yeah, I mean, you have to build out into Tate, so it's, it's a, you know.
Something that they, they'll have to come back to you with, so.
And that water meter pit is right in the middle of this crosswalk, is that what you're saying?
It's, yeah, it's right there. We showed it on the, so if you go out there and you see the metal plate, galvanized, diamond plate, we have it to the left of it. Right on the edge of that to the, or to the right, towards Kings Ferry. So if you look at that sketch that we sent out, it's there, so.
So, and I, I know we, we had this discussion before with the crosswalk. Years ago, if we wanted to do a crosswalk, we'd say to the highway department, hey, could you install that crosswalk? In today's world, you know, and that's why we are where we are. It's not just, you know, simply painting it, unfortunately.
Yeah, if it was there before and you painted it, that's one thing.
Yeah, 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 it was existing, but it's not. Yeah, we have never.
And then you paint it and then.
There's no crosswalk.
There's no crosswalk, so it's, so they're taking on all that responsibility, which should be good, so.
All right, what would, what's the board's pleasure on that? Would they like to go forward with that, paying for half of it or?
Well, do they have to make that decision now?
No, I'd like to see the scope of work before we do any of that. I'd like to see their renderings, drawings on, on what they proposed to bid.
They were pretty, they were pretty interested, they were going to move forward.
Dr. Becker said he's going to talk to his board, wanted you to talk to your board to see what interest was. That's the way Dr. Becker said it, so.
So I guess are we interested in moving forward? Is that the question?
I'd be interested in having them do the engineering on it and then we'd make a decision if we move forward with it after that.
Yeah, without knowing what the breakdown is as far as cost, I can't sit there and say yes.
Okay. So will you go back to the town and tell them the direction of the board?
The, okay, the board is, okay, we're moving forward with the engineering and see what the.
What they come up with.
Yeah, see what the numbers are. A scope and a, and a cost.
Yep.
And let's, before we decide we're paying half, we want to see what it is.
And may, maybe you only can do one. Maybe you can do the one that's at Bannon, but you can't do the other one because it's a property line, who knows? So until that's fleshed out, you can't really, can't really make a decision, I don't think. But you can take the next step, which is the design, which they're going to do, so. I don't think it's, that's not a cost to you, so it's good.
All right, any other questions for George? No? All right, George, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Have a good night. Have a good one.
Oh, my God, yeah. Some, just nothing but paper.
Do we get any money back from anywhere?
Okay.
Being in compliance with the ADA? I think you need to look into that. Yeah, the state does the inspections on us.
State, you okay?
Yeah.
So bringing it into compliance versus not.
I mean, if you bring it to compliance, you may be able to get some money for it from the state.
Every little bit helps, so.
Okay, moving on. Hold on one second, let me find my agenda again. I just had it. Yeah, no, we're going into the reports now. Thank you. Information from officers and departments, justice reports, December twenty-twenty-three. I'd just like to read the amounts, nineteen eighty-one, twenty-eight thirty-six, one thousand five hundred and ninety-six, and five thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Police report, Steve, what do you have?
For the month of December, the Village of Buchanan Police Department had a hundred and forty-five calls. Of those calls, fifteen were calls for service, eight to assist citizens, three motor vehicle accidents, and eighteen property checks.
Okay, thank you. Highway Department?
Oh, Highway Department, household garbage, seventy-three tons, bulk dumpsters, eleven point three tons, dumpsters only, ten tons. Lot of, lot of stuff done here. They cleaned up Monroe Park, you know, prepared for the Christmas tree and all that was done. They cleaned up the parking lots, blew leaves, we were a little behind on leaf pickup, so they, they caught off pretty quickly. They blacktopped around catch basins. And you guys can't see the pictures, but they were busy rebuilding catch basins in the area, so they did a great job. And I'm happy with the work that they're doing. They are remodeling, are, are actually redoing, I know, the room in, in the town garage for the, I think that's the art room for, for, for camp, right?
Correct.
So they are redoing that. I know they're busy and I saw it is, it's coming out very nice, so they're doing a great job. That's all.
All right, wastewater, treated water, wastewater, thirteen million eight hundred fifty-nine thousand gallons, sludge removal, sixty-five thousand gallons. Lab reports submitted to the Westchester County Department of Health, six. Lab reports submitted to the DEC, six. And everything over there seems to be, seems to be well. So thank God, things are running well at our plant. Building Department, December twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, in December, Peter has issued ten building permits. Issuing a lot of those, Peter, every month. He issued, let's see, twelve certificates of occupancies. And he's continuing his fire inspections and accessory apartment inspections and he has no illegal apartments to report.
That's good.
Amongst many other things he's been doing. Thank you.
Busy guy. Let's see, zoning board in minutes of October eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. And what I want to ask is the prosecutor's report, this is three or four months, there's no, there's no report. Is there anything going on with WIC or anything going on with AAA? We haven't, we just haven't been getting reports. Is there any update on that? Any information?
You ready for my report?
I'm ready for your report.
Well, you got skipped over to, you skipped to Buchanan Engine Company.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan. Oh, my goodness. Dan, I'm sorry I left you out.
That's all right.
I apologize.
The Buchanan Engine Company for December first through thirty, the December thirty-first, zero structure fires, three EMS assists, six automatic alarms, three mutual aid, for a total of thirteen alarms. And again, I'll, you know, like I say, every, every meeting that I read off this report, they're always looking for volunteers, so. Anybody looking to get involved in the volunteer firemen's realm, just feel free to reach out to Chief Bob Outhouse. Thank you.
Is the chief still here? Oh, he left, oh, okay, all right. All right, the attorney's report, it's your turn, Stephanie.
Okay, so Ingrid, the prosecutor, did reach out to me to iron out a couple of missing or incomplete matters with AAA. And so I reached out to the council, they have two attorneys, I reached out to one I normally work with. And so happy to say, the final CO was issued and signed today. And it is going to be exchanged hand to hand with our check tomorrow. So we're not mailing, we're not changing names, we're, and it's going to be made out to the Village of Buchanan this time.
Well, yeah, that's what should be.
Conclude this matter finally.
Thank you. And thank you for your help with that, too, Stephanie.
Yeah, and I think the next thing that will happen is, well, we're waiting on an ASBIL, but the surveyor got the survey in today and that's not. And then they're going to make an application to merge, I believe, the two lots.
Okay.
Because this one will be legal. And the only other thing is that Marcus, myself, Peter, and George had a pre-planning meeting with two applicants that are becoming before the planning board. I have to say it was a good idea to do that because we worked it out, I think we spent an hour with each of them. They brought their engineer, one brought their counsel. We, you know, it was really, it was a helpful, it spends less money for them and less time with our planning board trying to weed through what's going on. So I think we should continue that as much as possible.
I was just going to say, yeah, sounds like a good idea.
And they're going to be submitting soon.
Good.
I hope.
All right.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Administrator's report?
Not much, but definitely we have a couple of planning board applications coming in, not really big ideas, but again, for the public, we have two, probably two, possibly three with a lot subdivision for two-family house. So we might have a couple of applications for the planning board, we definitely have a couple of applications for the zoning board as well. So it's been a long time we haven't had real applications for each board, but it's got, it's going to get a little busy for the next couple of months. So if people are interested, please tune in or come to the meetings, I think it'll be interesting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor's report, I have quite a bit, so bear with me, lot going on, busy, busy. Next week, I am meeting with representative of Senator Gillibrand's office to discuss federal money for Indian Point. There's going to be, it was kind of put on the wayside, the Stranded Act, but it's going to be reintroduced. So I will be meeting with them and also, that's why I was hoping the, the chief was here. I've also asked them to meet with the fire department. There's an FY twenty-three grant for three hundred and twenty-four million dollars. They know, they're aware of it, they're, they know that's available. And it can be for vehicle acquisition, first responder training, PPE, emergency response equipment. So they will be submitting that. And we're also looking for, for that grant and also for everything else. A letter of support from Gillibrand, Schumer, and Congressman Lawler. I have been in contact with Congressman, Congressman Lawler. We have been speaking a lot about the Indian Point property. He's been very helpful, so we will continue to work with him. So that was, I, I had said several months ago, there was things that I was working on, that's what I've been working on with the senators and the congressmen. I spoke to Barbara LaFemina a couple of weeks ago and she was looking for things in the Village of Buchanan for Community Day. And I suggested to her perhaps the students on Earth Day, which is April twenty-second, but that's a Monday. So maybe the village could organize an Earth Day that Saturday for April twentieth. And then we could bring those students in to get some community credit. And that, we've done Earth Day before and it's a lot of fun, it really is. We go over to Lenz Cove because there's always something washing up on the shores or, and Bob, Bob's been involved in the Earth Day festivities before, so. Sometimes they, they really, yeah.
Let me ask you a quick question?
Yes, no, we have to work it out with the union now.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah, yeah, no, because we've had, we've had issues in the past. So, but I just wanted to mention that, that's, you know, something we need to work on.
Okay, just let me know, keep me posted so I can reach out.
Thank you, okay. We had our first recreation committee last, meeting last week. They will be meeting again on the fifteenth. Um, they will be meeting again on the fifteenth. Um, it's a very nice group, and that went very well. I will not be at any further of the, of the meetings. Um, I prefer that the recreation committee comes together and looks at the needs of the village, and it's an advisory committee. So they will eventually come forward to, um, the village residents and, um, uh, to the board with their thoughts on, uh, on what to do with our recreation here in the village. And also, we talked about potentially doing a survey, so, um, but as we go forward, um, there'll be more information on that.
Teresa, I was going to ask you real quick, do, do you want that to be noticed as well, or as like a meeting, or what?
We kinda have the committee together.
Okay, so you want the, no, public notice to the public?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't think so, because the committee's already formed, so we can't have somebody coming in like halfway in when they're, they're already moving along, so it's, it's, it's a pretty nice committee already. Did I, did I skip you, Marcus, with the administrator's report?
Yeah, we're done.
Oh, okay, I, I didn't, that was quick.
Yeah.
That was very quick.
Yeah.
So, as you can see, sometimes our meetings get a little rough, and so I thought about, we need a little more love in this village. We just need a little less anger. So I'm driving around the village circle, and I said, you know what would look nice out there? Some hearts. Who out there has seen the beautiful hearts that the highway? So I called the highway department, and I said, you know, could you guys, when you get a chance, is there any way you can make some hearts? And they exceeded my expectations. I, I mean, they are just absolutely beautiful. So I'd like to thank Scott Horton, the highway foreman, Randy Hesselgrave, uh, Matt Mallory, and Mike Giuliano. That, it just put a smile on my face. I, I drive around sometimes the circle just to look. It's beautiful. So they did a great job. I thanked them so much. And also, because now that I saw what a good job they did there, I said, you know, do you think you could do a shamrock too? So, in their spare time, when they have time, they're doing this, so um, I just, I, I thanked them so much. They did a fantastic job, and it looks great. So there's a little more love out at the circle. Um, I was in Albany yesterday, um, for the NICOM legislative meeting, and you know, the Village of Buchanan, when we had entered you here, we were kind of like our own little islands. We were subs, we, we, we subs, we assisted here. And you know what? Times are changing. There's a lot going on out there. There's a lot going on in the state. There's a lot going on in the government. So I always like to go to the New York Conference of Mayors, um, you know, anybody can go, the board members, the mayor, it's not just mayors. And this was a legislative meeting, uh, because you know the state is just moving forward with, um, their budget. So this is a fun time of year. All kinds of stuff are happening. So I had the opportunity last night, I actually spoke to the governor for a few minutes, and um, I, you know, I introduced myself, I'm Mayor Nikabacher from the Village of Buchanan. I'm sure you remember us, the Indian Point property. You know, we really need some help, and I, I would like to, uh, meet with you or your staff again, because when we were doing the decommissioning parts of it, her staff would call me. So, um, and I also said to her that we will be sending a letter to her, so to be aware of that. And she said, okay, I'll be looking out for that letter. So I, I know I had done a letter, and um, I had passed it on to board, the board, but I don't think the letter, the, the board was happy with my letter. It got into a little historical of it, because if I'm sending a letter to the governor, I want her to know the history. I want her to know, understand why we're looking for things. So, um, then the attorney was directed to craft a letter, um, to send to the governor. And so I'd just like to know from the board where, where are we with the letter to the governor?
Well, I think, I don't think we've reviewed it as a board to decide when and if we're gonna send it up, and I think, quite honestly, that letter needs to be addressed from the entire board, not from the office of the mayor and signed by just the mayor. That's my feelings.
Okay, Dan. Okay, we're talking two different things here. So the letter that I did went to the board, and I've asked at the meetings, um, for input. And Dan, you did. You did give input about the storage of the water containers, and every time I asked for input, nobody said anything. It went out to the board, the letter went out to the board, and I was still looking for some more comments, and I never got comments. The next thing I understood is, it was, it was sent to the attorney to craft the letter. So my only, it's, my only question is, I, I, I know you, you didn't like my letter, but are you, are, does the board want to approve the attorney's letter that she wrote to send to the governor? That's, that's my only question, 'cause obviously mine is not being considered.
Well, to go back to what my comments were about the letter, okay, the one that you crafted, I said when it's, in my opinion, that it needed to be concise and precise if it's going to the governor. That's when I suggested that we utilize Stephanie and craft a letter that is exactly that. Concise and precise, 'cause you want it to be read.
I get a little wordy sometimes.
So I did see the letter that Stephanie drafted. I looked at it. I think it should be coming from the entire board, not just the, the, the office of the mayor, and signed by just the mayor.
Oh, that was never the direction, Dan. The direction was from the whole board. So Stephanie crafted the letter. It went to you guys for-
Why are you bringing all this up tonight, Teresa?
Because are we sending the letter to the mayor?
Are you, are you in, are you in election crunch time now too?
Well, you know what?
'Cause it seems like you've got an awful lot on your, on your docket here today.
I'm busy, Dan. I do a lot of work for the village.
So do I.
I'm constantly working.
So do I.
I'm constantly looking for money. So I have not announced if I'm running yet, so. This is a fun time of the year. I will tell you, everyone, this is Kabuki Theater at its best. So I apologize for the rowdiness on the board this evening, but-
The rowdiness? Did, did I raise my voice?
No, you did not.
Am I rowdy?
No, Dan, you're wonderful. So anyhow, Dan, are you in agreement, is the board in agreement with the attorney's letter to send to the governor?
I can't, I can't- I am in total agreement with the attorney's letter. How about that?
I can't speak on the, on the rest of the board.
It's about the cessation fund, and it's direct, and it's exactly what we needed. That's all we needed.
And quite honestly, the letter should've went out a long time ago.
Well, I was waiting for feedback, so. Steve, is the attorney's letter appropriate to send to the governor? Do you feel that's the letter?
Yes, I've read the, the letter. I believe it's appropriate.
Um, Bob?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, so the attorney crafted the letter, so it will be sent as, as the board did it. So Stephanie, thank you for crafting the letter to the, to the, uh, governor. So I think, I think we're in agreement to send that out. Right, in the village letterhead, yes. I never said I was doing the office of the mayor, so I thought this was going to be-
That's how it got sent to the entire board for review.
I have to relook at that. No, your letter didn't. Mine, I was, I still didn't finalize my, my letter, Dan, I told you that. But then I found out the board didn't, wasn't interested in my letter, so. So Stephanie, Cindy, Sharon, that will go out on the village letterhead with everybody's name on it. Thank you.
I'll send it to you tomorrow, Cindy.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, oh, okay, well, I'll resend it if you don't.
All right, good to get that. Um. Oh, Dan, um, I, I know I sent you an email today. Are you able to go to the school board meeting, um, Thursday night about the armed camera program? It's an informational meeting on school buses.
I just saw it a little while ago. Yes, I will be, I will be there.
Perfect, thank you. And I just, I, I want to mention to the residents, so that if they're hearing things, I, I just want them to, to hear from, from this meeting. The village, um, has been served a lawsuit on an incident that occurred last year. Um, of course, we, um, we definitely, um, we disagree. Obviously, we disagree. Um, but it's in the insurance carrier's hands now, so, um, to defend it, and I, I can't say too much more, because it's a lawsuit. But I want people to be aware, because I'm sure you'll hear rumors and things like that, but that's exactly what's happening. Um, let's see. I just have, I just have a lot going on here, oh my gosh. Fire department, we talked about them. Oh, and a lot of the legislation that is coming out, I know the Westchester Municipal Officials Association, one of the things the governor had talked about, now you guys remember last year with the housing? They wanted to basically allow, uh, other structures on properties. They were, they were going over the local municipalities' zoning, and they just wanted to, the governor and the legislature wanted to create all this additional housing. So they got the message loud and clear, that people were not interested to be forced to do housing. There are communities, believe it or not, that want housing. So going forward, what the governor is doing this year is they're going to rate, um, if you're a, a pro-housing, uh, community. And if you are, then you get, uh, better advantage, advantages on some of the grants, like the DRI, which is the downtown revitalization, and that's a ten million dollar grant, so we would never see that. But they also have something called Moving Forward New York, and that's a smaller grant for the smaller communities. So, you know, thank god, they, they got the message with the housing, instead of, uh, trying to do one size fits all. So for this year, that's good. So there's much more legislation going on. Um, there's AIM funding, you're looking increasing for AIM funding, which is not a lot for us. Um, they're also looking to, uh, they're asking for increase in CHIPS. So the AIM funding, we get about seventeen thousand a year. The CHIPS funding, which is the road funding, we get about a hundred and eighteen thousand. So there's a lot of things in play with this legislator coming up, legislature coming up, and Marcus knows about the AIM and the CHIPS funding.
Yeah, besides that, I just want to bring something up. I don't have a point. Is there a salt tax?
The salt tax? Yeah, they're talking about-
They actually have a bill being, I just to put it out there, they have to have a bill to increase from ten to twenty thousand. So if you have contact with your federal representatives, contact your federal representatives. It'll be, I think it'll benefit anybody that needs some release on the taxes, so. And it'll be retroactive to twenty twenty-three. That's what the bill has been-
That would be great.
So.
Contact your federal representatives. Uh, I have myself, so.
Good.
Do it yourself, so.
Yeah, that's a, that's a huge, when they, they put that salt tax in, that hurt, that hurt a lot of people. Ten thousand dollars and what we pay in taxes, our property taxes, that's nothing. So good. Yeah, I think, uh, I think Congressman Lawler is pretty much involved in that. Yeah, he's, he's good. He's on top of stuff. So for right now, I know I have more, but you know what? Um, I, I won't get too much into the legislation. I won't get involved in that, but uh. Okay, thank you. So Anthony, what do you have for us this evening?
Coming up this month, uh, we are busy with the, the AMS project. I'm glad that they came in and gave another presentation. The, um, I just want to make sure that the, the people know that the, uh, the residents know that the, the extension of the public hearing is till next month, which gives them one more month to speak their mind. I am, I will tell you that I am one hundred percent behind this project, and I won't differ from that, because I believe that this is where we have to start to build this community. And, you know, just by what Marcus said, the amount of applications that are coming in to the village at this time is, is exceeding way beyond what we were used to. I believe that the village is open for business. Not that we're gonna sell the village down the road, but we are gonna build the village to, to, to make it a community that i- is moving forward into the future, and it's, it can maintain with its police department, its DPW. We don't have to worry about moving, you know, the town or anything like that, taking over our facility. But I, I, I really think that this is a starting point for us. This development is way off of Route Nine. It's almost a hundred and thirty feet off of Route Nine. It's set back enough where you won't be able to tell if it's four stories, five stories, or three stories. You, uh, the landscaping will be, um, sufficient enough to make it look well-maintained. But this is a starting point for us to move into the future and, and bring other developers in, and, and I think it's a great idea, and I know there are people that are opposed to it, and I, I understand what you're saying. I just feel like we need to self-preserve, and this is how we have to start. So I am a hundred percent behind it, and I will continue being up, behind it, and I won't change my thoughts on it at all. This week, we also, um, have a meeting with Holtech. Uh, I just want to know if that is a Zoom meeting? Or are we gonna have it in person here? 'Cause I'm not really sure.
Uh, I got the invite, I got the invite from Holtech, so there should be a link, it's a, it's a, it's a Teams meeting, so you can log into your phone.
Well, you also said that you were setting up shop up here.
Yeah, so I'm gonna set up here too, so you can come, I'm gonna try to, I have, try to have that TV working again. Worst case, then we'll have that one in the middle here.
Okay.
I believe Pat O'Brien sent that out to everybody in December.
Yeah, yeah.
Sometime.
No, I got it. I just, I, I don't know, you, you, when I spoke to you, you said you were setting up shop here, as well as the link that I received back in December.
So if you can't make it here, you can log into your laptop or your phone, yeah.
Even here, it'll be via Teams.
It will be by, by Teams here.
They're not coming in personally.
Right. They're, they're not coming in personally.
As far as that letter to the governor, it's, it needed to be precise. It's about the cessation fund that is running out, and we need to get it extended because of the pause in the work at the Holtech facility. And that's why we, we went with Stephanie's letter. Her letter was precise, it was direct. It was what we're looking for, and hopefully we'll get. And, and just to touch base on the whole grants, the grants, we, 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 we put in for a grant, we were denied a grant. And we wanted to, we wanted to fix that process. We want to make sure that that process doesn't get altered the way that it happened this time. You know, it was a simple mistake by our engineer, but our engineer's not a grant writer, like Steve said. Uh, we were not, and I will continue to believe this, I was not a part of making George to review that and resubmit it. I never heard that conversation, just to put it on record. It might've been talked about at the meeting, but that, that meeting with George and the mayor, I was not there, and you heard it from George himself. So we are gonna hire a grant writer now, and I, I believe that this will, will benefit us a lot more in the future. The parade is coming up. Steve and Danny are, are really working hard on it, but it's gonna require a bunch of volunteers. And, and I'm, I'm saying this, I know they're gonna bring it up again as well. Um, they took this on as a responsibility to make the village, uh, you know, to have some fun in March. St. Patty's Day is a great day. It's a great day. I'm Italian, I get it. I get it. But St. Patty's Day is fun, the village comes out. For years, I've, I've seen people have parties and, and get-togethers on that day, and, and it's a really nice event, but it is hard work. Steve and Danny have raised a, a, a good amount of money, but we need volunteers to help organize. And they have their meetings, and Danny and Steve will probably tell you when the next meeting is. And I attended the last meeting because I, you know, I feel like we, we need support, and, and if you guys could help out, out there in the community, that would be fantastic. And, um, you know, I, I want to thank the mayor for going to Albany and bringing back all that info that she brought back. I mean, it was, it was great to hear that there was information out there that I didn't know about, and, um, I'm grateful for that. Um, and that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Bob, what do you have this evening?
You guys are tough act to file.
Yeah, right?
You know, I don't really have too much. Like I was just saying, I'd like to see a lot of new faces here. I think it's good, you know, there's a lot going on. The AMS project, it's the second or third time I've seen that presentation. I think it, I also think it's a very good thing for the village. I know there's a lot of questions people have, but we also have a lot of things we have to do to move this village forward. And, uh, other than that, I'd just like to say happy Valentine's Day to everybody.
Thanks, Bob. Steve, what do you have for us?
Just to-
Getting all warm and fuzzy in here.
Just to touch upon the, the AMS project, they were before us, uh, it was April of twenty twenty-two. So, you know, basically two years, and at the time, you know, I, I said it, I said, you know, it looks a little large, you know, we come back, try to, to adjust it, and, you know, they, they really did a good job. They've listened to us. And I know personally, I've questioned every single thing, every meeting they come to, I've, I've questioned them. I've, you know, asked them to change some certain things and, and looked into it, you know, considerably, so. You know, they're not here on trial. They're here to be a partner of ours, and I appreciate that they're coming, looking to make a significant investment into this, this village. And, uh, you know, I, I just want to continue to work with them. I've, you know, I've spoken, I've gone out to Yorktown, they're doing a big project- they're doing a big project in Yorktown, I've spoken to some of the officials up there, and, you know, they've had nothing but great things to say about them, so, you know, just looking forward to working with them. And then just thanks Sharon for getting the, the Facebook page up. This way we can, you know, inform the residents of anything else that's going on, so that's all I have.
Dan, what do you have?
Just to reiterate what the other members of the board were saying, I appreciate AMS coming in and doing another presentation. And I too am fully behind this project, I think it will move this village into the future. And I think if the saying goes, build it and they will come, I think it's, it's, it's going to be a positive addition to our community. To hit on what Anthony was saying in relation to the St. Patrick's Day Parade, Steve and I have been working, and we've had some volunteers step up, Eileen being one of them. And we've had some donors actually step up, and we're greatly appreciative of that, but we do still need volunteers. The parade's going to be scheduled for March 10th at 2:00 PM. And we're looking to do some kind of a brunch beforehand at the Buchanan Firehouse, and just kind of segue it into a, a nice, nice event for the, you know, a good portion of the day, so.
Is there a meeting coming up for that?
Steve?
We'll put together, Dave will send that out.
We will put together, if you want to send us, give us your email or phone number, yeah. So we will be having more meetings, yes.
We have, you have the, the meeting, the Facebook page?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we do have the Facebook page, correct. So I see Paul from Certain Teed out in the audience, and he's, they stepped up, they, they made a very nice donation. Thank you, thank you very much.
I, I just do want to touch on one thing, yes, thank you for doing the St. Patrick's Day Parade. I know what it's like to do these events. I've been doing the Buchanan Day for over 10 years. The last couple of years, I'm mostly organizing it since, you know, it's a well-oiled wheel at this point. But we, we've had excellent, the village has excellent volunteers, especially the beautification committee. They always step up to help the village out, and they're a big part of Buchanan Day. So yeah, I know, I know the amount of work that goes into that, but you know what? It's enjoyable to see people having a good time, the community coming together, and that, and that's what these events are all about. Going back to the grant, we will have further conversations on that, I will look at the previous videos. George and I met with the DEC to see what their requirements were to go forward to do the grant. So I will, we will further have further discussions on that. And then, so I'm, what I want to ask the board, so we have the Carbones that are, that have a project. We have AMS, we have another company on the corner of, which we just extended their, their agreement, on Blakely and 9A. So after that, until the Entergy property becomes available, I'm not thinking of, I can't think of any other properties that are developable at this point.
There's the, the.
Oh, the Gretchen property.
Yeah, no, Rolindo's property on the corner of White Street.
The old gas station.
Yeah, that's reused, that's reused.
Yeah.
And, and what I'd like to say is, the previous board worked on an overlay district, and we realized that we needed to do some type of development here. And it took us almost a year, and we looked at the characteristics of the village and, and different things, the properties were available, we looked at the 9A corridor, and we wanted to encourage development. And with that overlay district, it did encourage the development. And you had on there, you had on that board at that time, you had Nick Zachary, who was the chairman of the zoning board, who was on the village board. And you had former mayor Sean Murray, who was a planning board member, planning board chairman, mayor in the village. So we had, we had a good group that worked out the logistics of all that, and it took us almost a year to decide what we wanted to do. But the, the previous board had foresight, looking at the development. So, you know, you have a reuse there, I understand, Stephanie, you had spoken to somebody else, kind of a reuse, to do some apartments, so it's the other project you were talking about. It's already existing, but they want to put apartments above.
Oh, that's one we mentioned.
Yeah.
Calibro.
So the reason why we have this is the overlay district that was worked on with the previous board that understood we needed to do some development. So not the scale we have, but some development. And I want to mention, I spoke to Lisa, and she came up with a phenomenal idea. What I see in other communities, the town of Cortland does it too. And when they have a project, and I think we used to do this, Cindy would know, Cindy would remember, where you would put out like a poster on the property saying, "Public hearing, Planning Board Public Hearing," and the date and all that. Oh, just in the window, I thought we, we had, years ago, I mean, I'm talking years ago, where, you know, it's put on a stake, and it's like a poster size, and it's put on the property. That might be something to consider going forward for any of the projects that are going on. So people are more aware that, oh, there's something going on in this property.
I actually, Lisa brought that up, and I think, we talked to Peter, I think those signs cost about $250, something like that.
They usually do the metal stakes, I could do it for a real estate sign with the plastic wafer board.
Yeah.
The plastic wafer board that slides over. I've worked in other municipalities that had it, but it was also part of the law.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta.
It's not just, you put it up.
Yeah, the town of Cortland has that.
Out of the requirement of the law. And they, there was a fee for that, and it varied on what they needed to do, each board had a different fee.
Well, that's something going forward, so people are aware, you know. Okay, so what comments do we have from the public?
Diane Tangen again, it's funny you bring up Gillibrand, because this is what I was thinking about Indian Point, and I don't understand. The federal government has a huge, huge fund for storage, for waste storage. In fact, it generates billions of dollars in interest every year. We, and all nuclear power plants, all those are closed, even when they're active, have been storing the nuclear waste. Why can we not approach the federal government? And you're going, and I was going to say Gillibrand and Schumer and Lawler, I would even think some of the Rockland County people might be interested. To start some kind of a movement, that they should be paying us for storing the waste. And they have no timeline when they're going to be providing a depository, what's it called?
A permanent, yeah, permanent.
Whatever it is, permanent place for the nuclear waste. Okay, that's my first thing that I wanted to bring up. And the other was, after the snowstorms, a major walking route for kids going to school and people walking is Lindsay Avenue and the Albany Post Road. And there are several people who do not shovel their snow within a timely period at all, their sidewalks. And I do think that the building inspector or the code enforcement should watch that, and they should get after the people, because it could, it could impact the village also, because you could have a lawsuit.
It doesn't hurt to actually call me and let me know, I can't see everything.
Well, it's, it's an easy route, it's just an easy route.
I do, I'm very busy, so if you want to call, let me know, if you see something, I'll gladly go.
Well, okay, but I hate to be, it seems as though, I don't know, I also think that that's such an important route, that perhaps anybody, maybe you should look at it once in a while too, but I will, thank you.
I, I just want to comment, the Stranded Act, which Senator Duckworth had introduced a while ago. She's from Illinois, and the Zion plant is in Illinois. There's about 13 to 15 plants that are closed now that are storing this waste. Is that what the Stranded Act is about? Oh, okay. And the, there was an agreement with the Department of Energy years ago, I want to say 90s, that the, they would not stay on site, that they are responsible for removing that from the property and finding a, a permanent place to store it. Well, long story short, here we go, and, and I think hindsight now with, with all that, they.
The federal government is a joy to deal, you think the state is tough, forget it. So, but I, I don't think they really thought it out, because they just kept kicking the can down the road. And it, they are responsible for it, the, the Holtech is not responsible. So what Holtech does, and all these other communities, all these other nuclear plants, what they do is, they wait a couple of years, and they sue the federal government for the storage of that on their property. So whether it's security or infrastructure, whatever, you know, expenses are, so that they get their money back. But what about these communities like us that store that there? That's not, that's not fair to us, because.
Who gets their money back?
The, and Holtech.
Oh, Holtech, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we should get.
Yeah, so that's, that's what the Stranded Act is about, and, you know, like I said, it affects 13 to 15 communities right now. But, yeah, we should not be responsible for that storage, because that hurts us eventually when that property becomes available, that hurts us for redevelopment.
Well, also we're storing it, it hurts us because we have nuclear waste right in our backyard. The other question I had was about, I thought that if legislation had been passed, that we could tax?
Yes.
Well, why aren't we taxing?
We use that when we negotiate with Holtech, because we have a basis for what the taxable amount should be. Because that law was passed, I forget how many years.
When you negotiate for a pilot program?
Yes, yeah. So that law was passed years ago because we needed a basis. But not only that, if you think about it, and we were lucky, you know, that it, it passed through both houses, and the governor actually signed it on New Year's Eve.
I remember that.
And it, because we looked at it, that it was like a house, it was, it's not going anywhere. So it, it's like permanent, like a, a structure. And so we were able to, be able to assess it, because they're probably worth more now, Steph, a million dollars. Originally, it was considered a million dollars per cast, we have 127 casts over there now, it's all on pad, everything's on pad right now.
So what do we get for the 127 million dollars of?
We do a pilot instead, because that will be challenged, and we would need a judge with a lot of guts.
So the pilot is the most recent one we had.
Yeah, payment in lieu of taxes.
No, I know what a pilot program is, but it's the, so how often are we negotiating? And I even do know how much, I have it on my, my email somewhere.
Well, we're. Negotiating again? Uh, we're. No, I know, but what year? Two years out? We're, we're like a year and a half out.
Yeah.
2025.
Every.
Five years.
Every five years, oh, okay, yeah, all right, thank you.
All right, and I just wanted to mention, one of the other monies we should go for is Senator Lowey at the time. She, what she had is, she formed a, a fund, 15 million dollars. And the 15 million dollars was to be used for communities that their nuclear power plants closed. The only problem is, to access that money, is you have to go through the EDA, the Economic Development Association, and you have to show that you can produce jobs. So now Schumer has basically the same thing, but he reworded it, it's his legislation. So the problem with that is, we're the host community, we can't access that, because we're not producing any jobs. Until we can redevelop that property, we're not producing jobs, so.
You can't produce.
So.
Can't produce jobs, permanent jobs.
Right, so, oh yeah, no, it's not construction jobs, it's like, you know, if you put a building there, a business or whatever, that's different. So, so it's just, I'm hoping that he will see the light on that, because the town can access that if they do their property, you know, to do a driveway or whatever that is, because they'll be producing jobs, but the host community has no access to that. So I'm kind of hoping to have a conversation with him about that, that we can possibly tap into it to use annually to compensate us for the storage. Those are my thoughts, you know, I've been dealing with this, you know, Diane.
You should be getting millions of dollars.
Yeah, yeah, so, so that's, that's a lot, lot to do, a lot of work to do, but, yeah.
Well, we'd take more than us, if we'd take.
Oh yeah, no, no, there's a consortium of, of other communities, you know, I've been working with Zion Illinois and a few other communities on this for a while, so. And I'm, I was just glad to see that it was being reintroduced again, so that's a good thing.
There could be some kind of movement, I don't know, maybe we could.
Well, we'll go down to Washington DC, what do you think?
No, I haven't written.
Yeah, no, thank you, you've, you've been involved, I, I, we appreciate that. Who else would like to comment?
Good evening, everyone. Lisa Wenz, 206 Tate Avenue. I just wanted to remind everybody that there is a DOB Indian Point meeting this month, on February 29th, from 6:00 to 8:30 at the Cortland Town Hall.
Thank you for that announcement.
And I think it's important that people in our community go and listen, because.
February 29th?
February 29th. Yes, so it's an extra day, better way to spend it.
And it's at the town hall?
It's at the town hall, and it's at 6:00 o'clock? To 8:30.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then they have asked June 13th to come to the village also, so the June 13th meeting will be here in the village. And I'm hoping for the June 13th meeting that, you know, we get more of the community involved with that. Thank you, Lisa. Hello, Mr. Certain Teed.
Hello, good evening, everyone, my name is Paul Woolweaver. I have the privilege of being the Buchanan Plant Manager at the Gypsum Wallboard Plant, 350 Broadway. I appreciate you giving me just a second, I'm here to check in with everyone about the status of the draft LWRP and the ongoing consideration of existing zoning location along the waterfront, primarily that M2 district. We presented this back in October of 2022, and then we've submitted some letters and different emails over the last few months, and we're just waiting on some responses. I'm here tonight to just inquire what the village's next steps are in this review of this draft LWRP, including comments you got from the state. And then really, anything we could do around that M2 zoning? And then really, who would, should we be, who should we be speaking with? And is there something I should do with the staff or something like that?
Well, this evening, we're, we're not ready to address the LWRP. Nick Zachary was our liaison to, with that. Just to review, we had gotten a grant with the town to go into an LWRP, which is a local waterfront revitalization project.
Yep.
And Marcus might have some more information, I know it's been, you know, it's been a while.
Yeah.
But my recommendation to you is, when they have the public hearings for the LWRP, that would be the time, that would be probably the most appropriate to comment at that time.
And Mary, just to say, that's exactly where it would be, there's no public hearing schedule yet for LWRP and what it is. There'll be a public hearing both of the town and the village to hear comments from the public, including yourself. We're nowhere, nowhere near that timeline yet, we're still waiting for the state.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, nice seeing you.
Hi, good evening, Anthony Morando, Cuddy and Fader, I'm an attorney who works with Paul on the land use side of things. So I understand the, the public hearing process, that's probably, that means nobody wants to hear from an attorney. That, the, the public hearing process certainly is probably a ways out at this point. We're trying to get out in front of it as a critical property owner and stakeholder in the community. We've tried to open the dialogue, because for those of you who may not familiar with the LWRP process, it's different than, say, adopting a zoning amendment where Dave's going to come and do a presentation. It kind of, a lot happens behind the scenes, quite frankly, with the Department of State. And we just don't want to show up too late into the process where we now become the thorn in your side of being concerned about the language when we're trying to have sort of proactive conversations about it now. So we were just looking for a window into the process to see how we can have a little bit of a voice, given the critical nature of this project, excuse me, this property, it's a water-dependent use. We were just hoping to open that dialogue. So yes, we understand there will be public hearings at some point, but that's a ways off, and a lot will happen between now and then, so.
Okay, because we, we also as a board have not gone forward with the rezoning of that property. So, you know, we, we've talked about it, and then with Holtech being on an eight-year pause, it kind of slowed down, but, you know, I think that should continue, I think the conversations on what to do with the property in the future should continue, but, you know, that's, that's a discussion we'll have to have with the board when they would like to pick that back up.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for hearing us, appreciate it.
All right, yeah, no problem, come anytime. The only other thing I wanted to mention was, we had heard from Cindy, Cindy and Sharon, we had heard from a resident, and, and as I'm out. We had heard from a resident, and, and I, as I'm out and about, I, I'm hearing from people that they would like to have the calendar, uh, sent once a month again. I, I guess, you know, it's habit, it's easier for people, they get it, they, you know, fold it over, and they just, uh, put it on their, on their, uh, refrigerator and stuff.
Um, so, just for people interested, the biggest complaint we received, um, in the office, is that the calendar with the sanitation schedule was being received either too late, um, or it gets lost. So that's why we tried to do a three-month schedule, so that way people can plan accordingly for three months. We're still sending out the newsletter. The newsletter still has all the public information, the public hearings and everything else that has to go on there as well. Um, I'm just saying that if you're getting more complaints, that way, that's fine. We haven't gotten, we got one complaint. Uh, but I know every month, we get complaints, more, a lot of complaints every single month when the sanitation schedule doesn't arrive on time.
On the first of the month.
Correct. And we've had a situation where the postal office actually sent automated to New Jer- what's it, New Jersey?
Yeah.
Couple times, and these ladies are getting massive amount of phone calls on the sanitation schedule. So, that's the reason why we changed it.
Okay, no, I understand.
And also the calendar is online, and Sharon and Cindy works on an interactive calendar. So that way, things change, we can actually update that information as well. But people print a calendar, and then things change, and then they get, they argue why things change. So, I'm just trying to at least get people on some kind of schedule and be able to plan accordingly. But again, the public hearings, the public meetings are always, are still being sent out on the monthly, on the monthly time. So, um, we'll do whatever the board wants. I'm just trying to relieve the amount of phone calls we get in the office with the sanitation schedule.
Yeah, well, change is difficult too. Change is difficult for people, and, but, you know, honestly, I like getting the calendar too every month, but. I would just like to say-
Marcus, are you receiving a lot of complaints about this change? I mean, I, I, I mean, the only one I saw was the email. I mean, I haven't heard from anybody about it.
I'm, I'm talking to people, so I, I've probably had about 12 complaints.
I talk to people too, and I haven't had any complaints.
All right, well.
How about you guys?
I just thought I would bring that forward.
I think the only thing I really heard was some people would like to change, they don't like it, but maybe tweak it a little bit, because I know some people still like to have the calendar hanging that has the meetings on it.
But is there anything on that calendar that's subject to change? It's all scheduled.
Right, yeah, the sanitation schedule.
Sanitation is scheduled.
The sanitation schedule. The meetings, um, we actually put on the monthly newsletter that goes out that has all the meeting dates. So that way, the zoning board, planning board, village board will be on the monthly timeline that they all, they continue to receive.
Do we have a savings advantage?
Um, yeah, it's, it's less, because now we can compress everything, and they hit it by 14, or when it hit by 11.
Yeah, 11 by 17, it's a, so.
So, we actually save on the paper side as well and the mailing. By not having the large ones.
I said that we would bring it forward, so, you know, we're having the discussion on it, so.
And what Sharon did too, oh, just to let you know, what Sharon thought about doing is, and the, and the new quarterly one, we include the weekends, where people complaining, or they couldn't tell, it's five days versus seven days. So Sharon added that in the new quarterly one, so that way you can say Saturday and Sunday on it as well. Right, Sharon?
Trying to keep everybody on track, that's it.
Like I said, that's the only complaint I heard was maybe having the meetings on there along with the garbage schedule, that's all, because people like to hang that and they can look at it, because the other part that we get, people just read it and-
We can stick that, we can stick that.
Ends up being put out on Wednesday. They need to know what they're throwing away.
So Sharon, we see we can put the village board, zoning board, planning board.
Try to squeeze him in, I know, it's. And I just want to say, we always talk about the interactive calendar. If you don't know what it is, please call us, we'll help you, we'll show you how to do it, okay, because it is something new. Thank you, Cindy and Sharon. Thank you.
Yes, thanks for showing me.
Oh, and by the way, just to, I also want to say this immediately, we talked about this. Email blast, now Sharon got Facebook up and running too, so it's on Facebook. And if you want to get the meeting dates, e- but email blast, just register for the email as well. And that would let you know of any meetings or public hearings as well, and that, that goes right to your email.
And now you're gonna have a nice electronic sign.
There you go.
There you go.
More communication.
It's also on the website.
Are there any other comments from the floor?
I get zero from my town.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive discuss, and executive session, I'm so sorry, to discuss negotiations.
I'd like to add to that, personnel as well.
Personnel, okay. And personnel. Okay, uh, a motion to go into executive session, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.